Tuesday meeting of the Danville School District Board Directors. And here we are. So for the record, we're gonna. So we're gonna introduce ourselves around the room real quick. We're mostly in the room. My name is Clay. I'm the Chair of the Board, and we have some other members of the Board here. If you introduce yourselves one by one.
I'm Molly Lisa Clark.
Melissa Conley, Board Member.
Mark Tucker Superintendent.
Our two principals are here as well. You guys want to introduce yourselves for the record? I'll let you.
Sarah Welch Elementary Principal.
Dave Schilling Secondary Principal.
Awesome. Okay, so thank you very much, everybody. Everybody else who's attending, if you're if you are an attendee and you're in you. We're in a webinar format, so it looks like everybody that's is here this time was your last time. And so you're gonna feel like you're in a box, but we can see who you are and we welcome you. Thanks for coming. So far, there's three of you. Hopefully, there'll be more. Moving on, additions and changes to the agenda. I know there's one.
Yep, I just want to add for discussion some gym equipment that we had previously discussed pre-COVID, and it's back on the agenda.
Okay, we'll add that at the bottom of Board Business. And do we have any change to the agenda? Do we want to let anybody go first before we do all of our administrative reports? For instance, what do we want to run through it straight?
Sabrina, you okay, Tom Oles tonight?
I am. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna run through it straight. All right, next on the agenda, we're going to approve minutes. We're gonna prove the minutes of March 1st. Did everybody have a chance to look through all these minutes? By the way, Molly, nice minutes. Anybody have any comments on the minutes or corrections to the minutes from March 3rd? I know Molly has one, and on page six of the minutes, we got a note from Rob Alave said that he meant Schilling not told his comment. And so Molly has changed that, and so those minutes, the improvements will include that. And I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 3rd.
Can I get a second?
A second.
And if there's no questions, can we have a vote all in favor of approving those minutes? I as well. Second is the minutes from March 10th. That was the hiring meeting for Larry Kleigleman. Those minutes are here. Everybody have a chance to look through. Are there any questions? Any changes? And can I get a motion?
To approve the minutes of March 10th.
Thank you, Tim. Can I get a second?
I will say.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? If there's no further questions, we'll take a vote on that. All in favor of approving those minutes, March 10th.
That's all five.
And now we're going to administrative reports next on the agenda, and we are at superintendent's report. I assume this is some fresh off the presses.
Yeah, pretty fresh. You get it early. So this was the record. I'm just reminding myself what I said last week. So we're we're moving further and further out of the COVID-19 mitigation business. Drop the mask on requirement, indoor mask requirement on March 7th. As of Monday, we are no longer in the test kit, automatic test kit distribution for families because their kids are identified as presumptive contact. That's wrong way. The school nurse, we shifted to a clinical model in the school where the school nurse is not a contact point. She, and I'll say she because it's a she here, she has the ability to, you know, to assess students and staff that come in with symptoms and make some decisions around. She has tests that she can administer here at school. She can send people home. She can send test kits home with kids. And she can respond to family requests for test kits as long as we continue to have a supply. We're pretty stocked up right now. I don't know how much longer that's going to continue. The state's in the process of shifting distribution of test kits to retail outlets, pharmacies, Walmart, places like that. I understand when that happens, they will not be free, but hopefully they'll be available. The price is a little more affordable because the supplies are up. I just saw something in the paper yesterday that said we went from not having enough test kits to having way too many in this country. So we got flooded, the manufacturers ran out. We'll see what happens to that. I think from my perspective, it seems like we're continuing to move away from having to be overly concerned. We still have cases popping up here and there, nowhere near the level we had earlier here. The Act 173 judicial selection, and I've talked about a few times, it looks like right now the legislature is going to allow it to go into effect on July 1st. There was some talk about delaying it a year. But House Education or the House wants to delay a couple of the life rule changes possibly. And Sabrina's gonna breach the board a little bit later on. Special education rule changes, so I'm not gonna steal any of your thunder on that. And then I commented before and reported about Senate Bill 162 S162 that had language in it. It would have allowed a teacher to sign a contract, then continue to seek other employment after June 15th to break the original contract. And language was removed from that bill before it was passed by the Senate. It's gone to the House, the still possibility that it could be put back in, but ours to be in the House, I don't think it's, there's time to do that. So the last thing is there is a surplus in that fund. The governor had talked a few weeks ago about possibly doing a property tax rebate and mailing checks to property tax owners in July. The House decided that it's it's easier to distribute some of that money by raising the yield rate. And they passed a bill to raise the yield rate, and if that holds up in the Senate and signed by the governor, all the communities in CCSU are looking for an additional five to seven cent reduction on the projected tax rate that was approved when the voters of Danville approved the budget this year. So not a promise yet, but it's seems pretty strong indication that it's we're gonna be better on the local tax rates.
But they're not gonna know.
You, well, I will tell you, I will let everybody know when the yield bill is finalized, but where you will know it is when you get your tax bill. You see the tax rate, and it's like, oh, that's not what we voted on. Although most of voters don't know. Yeah, right. Should go down a little bit unless your property value.
I don't really know that one either.
Okay, so unless anybody has any questions about any of those.
Anybody have any questions? By the way, very timely report from the principals, and I thank you. Does anybody have any questions about the principal's report we got last Friday?
No questions. Great.
I sent you some emails about spring fling from my other gig, and you saw those today. I got in contact with the performer. Maybe we can get some quick in there that Molly, Molly come for us. And then saw some kids at some music festivals, and that's great. It's great to see these girls having their last hurrah here. And if you have any questions for them, if they don't, we're gonna move on. And we're moving on to the student services report. Fresh new. Sabrina is here.
If anybody has any questions.
We never get to talk to you. We'd love to speak to you. We may not have good questions, but we'll think of some.
No, but they never asked. None of the, the boards never asked questions about your report, but maybe they will.
I can give an update to one of my reports. Number four, I mentioned that we were submitting our student transition plans to the AOE. That was the only area we were under audit this year. We did get 100%, so we were done with all of our audits, hopefully, for a number of years. So that was, I didn't have that information when I submitted it, but we did submit it by March 10th. It was due March 15th, and we found out last week. So we're all good there. So that's good news.
On your December report, you had 290 kids across the SU on IPs, and is it still that big? Was it bigger?
I would say it goes back and forth. We typically pick up two or three kids a month, and we typically lose two or three students a month. I know specifically in Danville, we had a couple of students move out right before February break, and I think we probably picked up some towards the end of February. And I see Sarah shaking her head yes. So I know we had a family of two move, our family of at least two students on an IP. I don't know how many students total were in the family, but they moved out right before February break, didn't return. But I also know we had students move in right after that. So I would say that number fluctuates about 10 probably on and off each month, but we typically, when students move out, they move in, just different families. So it's pretty, I would say it's between 275 and 290 on average.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions? Now, we're gonna head down to the student reps, and Liza sent in a report, and she is not here. And Thomas Agarson, a reporter, he is sick and he's not here. And so you would have gotten those reports this afternoon at about 5 o'clock. And if you'd like to, you can review them. Pleasure, and we'll move on from the student reps for now. Board Business. And the first thing on Board Business is the architects' updates. And we've actually been waiting this. And so we have Cam in person, Cam Betherson, and we have Richard zoomed in. And so I hope we have a big presentation of beauty.
Presentation of beauty. Can I join you over there, Mark? You can.
Cam, I hadn't, wasn't able to see that you were in the room, so I was worried that I was gonna have to do this on my own after just getting back a week away.
Whatever computer you're using, you logged, you came on as Cam.
Oh, yes, I changed my name, hopefully.
Wait a minute, I'm looking right at him, and now it's on the computer.
Well, I'm really just, I'm just Cam, Cam, Cam as well, you know, it's all Cam.
Okay, is it okay if I do my own slide?
Let me know when you're ready to kick off, Cam.
Okay, okay, I'm ready to kick off.
Okay. So I'll launch, and then Cam, you'll, you know, I think our, based on our discussion earlier, you'll probably lead most of this. But good evening, everybody. We really are excited of having the opportunity to talk with the the new members and the continuing members of the of the school board. Cam, really, I think in our our presentation has a history of where we've been, but it has been a saga that's gotten us here tonight. And we have, I think, three options to discuss with you that we'll need your input as to how, you know, where you want us to go from here. So we'll we'll do a little bit of a review of where we've been. I guess I should start off with an introduction. For those of you who have not met me previously, I'm Richard Dean. I'm the principal at TruX Collins. Cam, looks as though you've probably introduced yourself already. Cam is an associate with the firm, and has been really kind of leading the charge on this with a little bit of input from me. I think that the challenge that we, you know, we see just as kind of an overall introduction is that the, you know, the constructing and 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 addressing issues in schools that have been in and and used for many, many years is something that we do on a regular basis. It's it's a major part of our practice as a firm. What we're seeing unfortunately, and at least, and it's not as though it's a new challenge, is that finding ways to make these schools address 21st, our current portfolio of schools, address 21st century objectives is is something that's always a challenge, but the recent environment with our supply chain issues and the cost of construction has made it even that challenge even a little bit greater. So I think we'll see tonight some significant additional challenges because of the current cost of construction. So we're going to address that. But I think that what I can offer before Cam drives into the meat of this is that it's always a challenge. But I think, you know, we've, we have in the past been very successful working with lots and lots of other schools in finding a way to to get to find a solution that gets, you know, addresses those 21st century needs, but also addresses the financial needs of the community and the school. So with that, not really great introduction, I'll hand it over to Cam, who'll kind of give, bring everybody up to speed on where we are today.
Thanks, Richard. So, yeah, this presentation is intended to do three things, rather. It's intended to show you where we've been, where are we now, and where might we be going? Okay, so we started back in 2019. We did a facility evaluation report. The facility evaluation is intended to address existing needs irrespective of program changes or additions. It's really just kind of the nuts and bolts. What is the status of the building and its systems? What what are your systems at relative to end of life, wear and tear, et cetera? We break it up into three levels of priority. First top level is health, safety, and welfare or code issues. Second level of priority is items, systems that are at the end of their useful life or failing, or if there is significant energy efficiency gains to be made through replacement. And then the third tier is anything that's not in those first two buckets. It might be something like, you know, furniture in the library or something that's not mission critical, but would would a, would increase the the value of the school and increase the efficacy of education, just kind of educational needs.
That's the report you told us. We have breaker boxes from Lincoln 37.
Yes, correct. Well, it's, this is not uncommon. So that was 2019. In in the winter, spring of 2020, 2021, we went through a visioning and programming exercise. There was a little bit of a break there because we had some pretty serious needs that needed to be addressed before we could move forward with project planning. There was some air handling unit work done and some interim fixes made to kind of just patch over, you know, Band-Aid solutions. So we did some visioning and programming. This included a program analysis, included organizational diagrams and space needs programs. And and the findings included a need for pretty significant addition and and some reorganization of spaces to to address the existing program. Partially, this was about US elementary classrooms that are very, very small relative to what activities are happening in those classrooms. They're about half the size we would normally see for an elementary school classroom. And we also have a number of people, adults and jobs, that have been added to school districts over the past, you know, really 20 years. And like most schools that we go into, we find that people have been kind of tucked into spaces that were available. A closet here, a converted storage room there, and you kind of have filled up all of the spaces. And in some cases, people are working in too close quarters. And to just to reconcile things like confidentiality or having enough space to do your work, store your things, that there was pretty significant need for some administrative space and some auxiliary learning spaces, like special ed services and stuff like that. So those are the two big components, elementary classrooms and sort of admin special services needs. The initial design concepts we did were in the spring, summer of 2021. They focused on the on the building and expanding the building with a elementary school addition to the West. And and a few other little things, a cafeteria expansion, reorganization of the existing cafeteria space into other needs. We did a site concept and pricing drawings in late summer 2020. And we had some cost estimating done in the fall. And we're just ready to present that cost estimate, if that tells you anything.
Cam, one one thing that I might add before you leave that slide is that one of the the major effects or or changes to the existing building says that we propose to take the 1957 building down essentially because of its its level of construction and to provide the opportunity to put in a full auditorium space. So that was a significant change to to what had previously been shown or was previous insight now as part of the school.
So we 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 got some cost estimating done and ready to provide a cost opinion on this concept design. It includes all the items from the facility evaluation, and it includes all the additions and renovations needed for educational alignment. And it represents the complete cost to design and build everything that we've designed today. So a breakdown for this is that the facility evaluation work, the, it's, it's, these are pretty, pretty stark numbers. This is a serious conversation. I mean, I don't, I don't mean to make light or be glib about any of this. The facility evaluation work to complete over the next, let's say, five to 10 years, all of the repairs and replacements that are needed for the existing building as it sits is around 32 million plus. To build the additions that we've been showing is about another 24 million, just just under 24 million. Cost escalation from today's dollars to 2024, which would be the the absolute earliest you could put a shovel into the ground. The cost escalation alone on this work is about almost $5 million. And that's looking at just the cost of construction compounded year over year. Soft costs to do this project, we think, are in the neighborhood of $5.9 million. That includes permitting, legal costs, moving costs, engineering fees, and a few other miscellaneous things. It's basically all the money that you don't give to a contractor. All of the numbers above that are numbers that get paid to a contractor to do the work. We've included a recommended owner contingency of $4.3 million. That's intended to cover a few things. That's intended to cover unforeseen conditions that you find. It's intended to cover errors and omissions in the bid documents because there's, there's no, no human is perfect, and there's no such thing as a perfect set of drawings. And it also includes changes that the owner elects to make during the process because almost I've never been on a job where the owner hasn't changed their mind about something. Sometimes it's just circumstances change beyond your control.
Want a clarification on that, on that first side of me, because you call it facility evaluation work. That's, that's really bringing the existing structure up to code, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, well, it includes the the health, safety, welfare, and code issues, and it includes everything that is at the end of, basically at the end of its life, with old air handling units, original electrical service. I mean, some of these things, not to get down in the weeds, but the the original electrical entrance, for instance, is over 60 years old now. Parts are unavailable. If you talk to the to the to the guys that run these buildings, they'll tell you that we, they don't even test it anymore. They don't turn it off because it might not turn back on. And and we've seen this, this is true in pretty much every school that calls us because we get called when schools are ready to start looking at these things. So some of this is kind of a we think that the the upshot here is that about $32 million of this is is just work that will need to be done at some point. And you either plan for it proactively and make the change, or it fails and you fix it on an emergency basis. So it's kind of the cost of ownership to steward the this community asset forward without making changes.
What's the current value of the facility right now?
You mean like replacement costs?
As as it sits right now, what is the the value of it? So if you're gonna add another 32 million, but what I'm saying right now, without any improvements, what is the the value?
It's hard to under, I I'm not an appraiser per se.
It's in the town report. I think it's, I don't think it's a two, two, two numbers in a million words.
Because I'm wondering, you know, I.
Yeah, it it's a huge amount of money. It's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's an amount of money that is hard to conceive of how the town of Danville would raise that amount on their own. That's, you know, so that's, that's part of why we've really taken our time, really gone through, scrubbed out these numbers, made sure we've checked all the assumptions, made sure we double checked all the calculations because and but at the same time, before I get off this slide, I'll say that we have several other projects currently in the same boat. And I have another school that I just got a, I just got a cost estimate back last week, and I've been working through it. And the first blush was $65 million. And it's this, that school's not quite two times the size of this school. It's about 1.6 times the size of the school, same age, same complexity, same issues. That project, we think, is down to about $49 million for the same level of of work. And so we're seeing that it's scaling. Because again, not to, not to belabor the point, but all of these schools were all built during the same time periods. They're, they're almost all were mostly built out during the 1950s and 60s during a period of post-war expansion. Almost all of them were added on to in the late 80s, early 90s, when there was a big bubble of my generation that was born in the state. And this, this project and that project are exactly are the same story. So, you know, when we see these num, these kinds of numbers coming in in multiple parts of the state from different estimators, and we've got alignment that's within 5, 10% for general scope of work, it actually gives us confidence that those numbers are, those are represent real numbers. So that's that's a little bit of an aside. So.
Rob Alve asked a question.
Yeah, sure. I have a suggestion. You regard that design as a master plan. Okay, and you begin with a a beginning construction, perhaps on the grade school. And then you address the existing school. But in the next phase.
Phasing projects, phasing projects is definitely a strategy.
Yeah.
Let's, let's, let me, let me try and work through this because I think there's, there's a couple of other options that we've prepared for discussion because we think that this is the beginning of a community discussion. You know, this isn't, we're not going to resolve anything today. There's a much bigger conversation that has to happen with members of the community at large. So we've included a hazardous material allowance of just over $500,000. That's to a deal with abatement of hazardous materials that we strongly suspect are on site. That brings the total estimated cost for that concept design with all the site improvements, all the building improvements, additions up to over $70 million, which is just a staggering sum of money. So when we, when we brought this news to to Mark and to Sarah and to David, they, they said, we, what, what, what can we do here? What can we do? Is there another option? We said, yes, there is, there is another option. So we, we went back to the drawing board. We kind of went back to square one. And we said, okay, how do we, how do we meet the needs of the project and do it in a more cost effective way, either by trimming some items out of program or by looking at the arrangement on site and trying to make it more compact and limit the site disruptions? So this is what the existing building looks like right now. So this is an existing plan, and just so people are oriented, blue would be community spaces. Purple is elementary school. The kind of salmon color is middle school, and green is the high school. And gray is other service or could be like, we got a design tech in the library, and then orange is admin space. So we prepared an alternate plan which gets rid of the large addition separate building to the west. We're now building inside the footprint of the existing school for the most part. We've got a pretty significant addition kind of off towards the the residential property there, towards the town square for the elementary school. We've eliminated the separate cafeteria and combined the elementary gym and cafeteria into a single program element. So it would be, and some of you may have gone to schools like this where the cafeteria has a, has a sports floor. It's not, it's not wood, but and the the tables are folded up in the walls during gym time and brought out during, you know. So my son goes to a school with a gym cafeteria like that. So it's a little bit more compact. We're also not proposing that we tear down the 1957 wing because we've kind of made the auditorium more modest, although included the necessary health, safety improvements. And so we think Um, and so we think. That with this uh, plan, that's now you're seeing the first and second floor. We, we've, as I said, we've got a combined cafeteria gym, we've reduced the auditorium, we've reduced the demolition of existing. We've reduced the amount of new construction, but we've also increased the areas of renovation because we're keeping more of the old structure and rehabbing it. And we believe that there's up to ten million dollars of potential savings with this approach. Um, much of that comes from just a more efficient plan, less exterior wall. Uh, and less invasive site improvements because it was, this was a very difficult site to make work. With grades and traffic parking uh, to meet sort of the, the, the town requirements. Now. And we, we had to ask the question and we went back to our estimator and we said, okay, what's, how about a new school? I were like, where, where is that cost live? And so the estimator used a set of uh, comparable projects to derive a, a square foot cost. An average square foot cost for new schools in this area. And we prepared this very simple diagram. Uh, and some of the, the high points of this would be that uh, if you were to say build a new school. It would be purpose-built for twenty-first century education. There's less risk in this project because there are fewer unforeseen conditions and there's no hazardous material. Um, there's, there's a huge advantage to the school, community, uh, parents, teachers and critically students. Because there's much less disruption. Because what happens is, you know, the contractor shows up, they start building in soccer field. And then a couple of years later, the kids go home one summer and they come back and go to the new school. So there's not, there's not construction adjacent to educational spaces. There's not risk of contamination by. Uh, installation of wet materials or noise pollution or just general disruption. So there's advantages there which are, which are not related to cost. Um, another thing which is a little bit harder to sort of. To articulate, but um, the projects are a little bit better investment when you do this. Because a hundred percent of the money that you spend is going into the new project. Whereas when you do a renovation project, there's a whole lot of temporary conditions. Could be mobile classrooms, temporary partitions, uh, measures that you have that the contractor has to take to make sure that people are kept safe. And there's a tremendous amount of money that goes into that enabling work. So you're, you're not, you're maybe putting ten percent of the money that you spend into something that's, that it doesn't, it doesn't stay. It's, it's only spent in order to enable the work that you're doing. So the investment is less worthwhile from some vantage points. Um. We think that a new school on this site is in the range of seventy to eighty million dollars, a complete replacement school.
Right, and it's the complete expense of the project.
It's the complete expense of the project. Yeah, including all the soft costs, it's top project costs, all that, right?
You're gonna take out the old building except for the store.
Yeah, we.
I mean, there is some demolition and. I don't know what that.
That's, that's baked into that estimated number.
Right.
Um, yeah, we, we, it was only five notes on this drawing and one of them is historic school not demolished because we.
The old, oh, the old, the original nineteen thirty-seven.
Yeah.
We, we, yeah, um, that's, we don't, that's a bridge too far, we think. Um, yeah, and uh, it's also, I think that would. That's also something that needs to be discussed at the community level. I mean, sometimes old buildings are taken down. But I think that that particular building is part of the gateway to the, to the town. Um, and so we, I, we didn't feel comfortable suggesting anything other than it stays.
Actually, but like even uh, before that school, we had the old, old school. And that was demolished.
That one room?
No, it was, it was a big, it was a reason, you know, for that day, to speak.
Yeah, late eighteen hundreds type.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got one of those in my town too.
In fact, I believe it's on your. But it's on your earlier uh, snatch.
Oh, okay.
Shot of the school.
So.
So anyways, that's.
So, so, so this is an option that we think it would be, this community would be remiss not to. Think about this as a potential option and seriously consider it because the scale of investment is pretty high. No matter what you do, you know, the, the, the concept design that we first prepared. Um, which reused a, a lot of the existing building is inside this range of the estimated costs for a new school. And that's partially because um, renovation jobs are just exceedingly complex. And there is a lot more unforeseen conditions, which means contingencies are larger. And you have to manage that risk by holding more money out for what may come. So, so that's sort of the, the, the bulk of it. I, I did prepare one more slide. Which was sort of, I was trying to, to do a, you know, a summary here. Uh, and this is a good example of kind of the level of, of detail that the design has been resolved to as well. Option one, uh, the design is the farthest ahead because we've been working on the longest, we've developed it the most. Um, it does have a separate cafeteria and gym and it's a separate elementary school. Those are all thought to be positive things for the, for the, for the school functioning. Um, it has, the, some of the cons are that it's got a high cost as a plan. There's a tremendous amount of site disruption. Uh, it's, it is occupied construction, you know? Um, and there's a lot of money being spent on enabling work. Option two is pretty much the same, uh, except that it gets in the pros of reduced cost and less site disruption.
Have you got that in the S?
We think it's about a ten million dollar savings.
Oh.
So it, it could be up to ten million dollars. We, we, we really would need to do a little bit more work to, to get. We would need to do one more level of detailed drawing and get a, a professional cost estimator. Um, and then the third option uh, would be a purpose, you know, the pros are that it's purpose-built. It has the minimum amount of student disruption and it's probably the best investment of dollars. Uh, the con obviously is that it's probably the highest cost of a new school. So, you know, these are, these are not going to be easy discussions. Um, we think that the next steps are a project update along the lines of the presentation you've just seen. Uh, um. Given to the community that in various ways, either uh, assembly where the community is invited. Also flyers, uh, fact sheets, mailers, get people to engage with the process. Uh, we need to get some community feedback because this is uh. Something needs to be done at some point and the community, and the scale of investment such that if the community is not involved, there's no chance of success. Um, so that with the community's feedback, we would discuss the options, um, confirm an approach and a budget. Uh, there'd be a project proposal and a board, eventually a board recommendation. Uh, and it would be sent to a bond vote and then we would be often running on design and construction. Um, I don't have it in the presentation, but I will say that we did a little bit of digging. Uh, I talked to a couple of different contractors uh, to gauge. Uh, construction durations for these different approaches. Um, and they're, the contractors that I spoke to are pretty confident that a, a. To do these additions and renovations, either option one or option two is probably about two and a half years of construction. On site. Um, so you would start after school one year and then let's say it was twenty twenty-four, you'd be finished by probably January of twenty twenty-seven. So that's, just think about the time horizon on that. I'm talking to you now and we're talking about completion in five years on the, on the quickest timeline. That's, that's if we went, if there was a bond vote that was successful in November. Um, for a new school, it's a little bit better because it's easier and cleaner. They think that that's project could probably be accomplished in two years. Um. About two million dollars a month is about the fastest we can build in Vermont, just based on available labor pools. There's not enough. People available to do the work any faster. So um, about, about twenty-four months, about two years, would probably be three summers in two years. So if you started in twenty twenty-four, spring of twenty twenty-four, the kids would come back for the fall of twenty twenty-six and go into a new school. Um, so those are, that's kind of unofficial ballpark scheduling based on what we know now, which is kind of. Budget estimates and how big the project is physically. So that's, that's the end of my presentation and I'm sure that I've just created a host of questions. Which we are very happy to, to kick around. I just asked, please don't shoot the message.
Uh, we, we have uh, free attendees. Um, if anybody you want to ask questions about, we're, we're still on this. Agenda item, if you want to ask questions, share comments. Uh, if you could raise your hand, uh, if you go down the bottom of your screen and see a button, let's, let's raise your hand. Raise your hand, I'll enable your talking so that you can ask your question.
I would offer one other comment for people's consideration, community members and board members alike. Um, I alluded to the fact that these numbers are in line with several other schools. And including, you know, Hiddlebury Union High School, uh, Milton Schools. The Winuski School, but before we started working on that project. Um, and these numbers should not be interpreted as a, uh, as a lack of effort to maintain. The building. Um, what they actually are is they reflect historic. Uh, reluctance and tax avoidance as a primary goal of most politicians. Um, and what we've seen is we've seen just a ton of deferred maintenance over the past really thirty years. Um, and a mentality of it's. And, and so.
To that point, um, the number, the first number that you showed us and then Mark tried to clarify is, that's the, you touch it at all.
If you don't do any, no additions and no, no changes.
You just say, if you just say we have to fix the things that are actively broken or not to go thirty million.
Well, yeah, well, it includes things, just a, a little bit more nuanced than that, uh, because the items may not be broken. They may be functioning, but they're, they're, in the case of things like, for instance, your, uh, let's take domestic plumbing. For example, the domestic plumbing system, which includes piping overhead, includes piping under the slab. Uh, the bulk of that material is uh, over fifty years old. And those systems have a fifty-year lifespan. So they're, they're on borrowed time. They have not failed yet. Uh, what we find is that you can't even cut into those systems to fix things. Because there's not enough good material left after sixty years underground. Um, so when we plan for these projects, we plan for. Uh, and also things like the domestic piping system, the copper, it's above, it was all built during an era when they used leaded solder. Um, so we make the blanket recommendation to remove those systems to eliminate lead in the system. So that when they reach the end of their life, they don't start to reach. Because that's probably already happened. And I'm sure you guys have already done your lab testing and addressed the fixtures that have issues. Um, but that problem has not gone away by changing the fixtures, not prob, just like. The piping systems in Flint and other areas of the country uh, have problems because they've been contaminated over the time. Same thing will happen here. So it's a, it's a time bomb. Um, which is maybe a bad uh, example to use in this community, but um. The time to start planning for replacement before failures now. For, you know, the Winuski School District had a single uh, main failure, uh, and it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar emergency fix. Um, so it'll catch up with the community if it's not managed proactively. And part of a project approach like this is to manage it proactively by replacing the old systems with, with new code compliant. Uh, systems that will function for another thirty to fifty years without problem.
We do have one hand up from attendee, uh, Lance, I'm just enabled your ability to. Talk.
Hi, yes, uh. Yeah, thank you. I, I may have missed it, but is there, are there federal or state funds available to this or grants? And uh, what would the taxpayer burden be looking at approximately?
Well, they're currently not federal or state money. There continues to be talk about uh, pumping money into. Uh, public school projects nationwide, but that, and I think there was money in one of the uh. One of the pieces of legislation that didn't make it out of Congress. There's, you know, it's, it's recognized in the state of Vermont by the legislature and it forced the agency into a couple of projects to address that. But we have, the public schools of Vermont have a lot of uh, dated infrastructure. I don't, I wouldn't make a prediction on whether or not we're going to have federal or state money, uh, that's going to come in time. I, you know, I hope. Hope that something is going to shake loose at some level to, to provide some help. In terms of the, we haven't tried to do, um, gotten to the point where we have any, really any ability to. We have to know what, what the community wants to do before we go and, and try to talk to somebody about financing. Um, so we're, we're not, we're not there yet. The one thing I can tell you is that the, you know, the cost of. The cost of anything that we do in the school, in the school budget is not a hundred percent borne by the. Uh, residential property taxpayers in Danville. So there's kind of a three, three-way split on how that. On, on how that's covered. This year, thirty-one percent of the school budget is paid for by residential taxpayers in Danville. Thirty-nine percent by the non-residential taxpayers and the other twenty-five percent. Uh, it comes straight out of the Ed Fund and that's actually paid by our communities, uh, wealthier communities that pay into the Ed Fund more than they take out. Um, so there's that, there's that factor to consider and those, that ratio of percentages changes every year, but. Um. I think that we, we, we've got to get a little bit further down the road to know. You know, we don't go to, we're not going to go to the bond bank and say, hey, what would, what would it cost to do all three of these? We have to tell them what we want to do and then we may go to the bond bank, we may go to the USDA. That's how, um. Uh, Winuski ended up financing their school renovation project, which is almost done.
Yeah.
It's almost done. I mean, if any, if you're curious about what happens when you do, when you renovate in place, you can still get a sense of that if you drive. By the Winuski uh, school, uh, next time you were going to Costco, get off at Winuski and drive by the Winuski School. And uh, and you get a sense of what's going on there because they've been living in the middle of a renovation project for.
Couple of years.
Couple of years, going on three years now. And I, I know some people, I have a friend that teaches there and he said it's, you know, it's, it's been an interesting experience. But they're getting through it.
It's very generous. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wonder also that the timing as well with, with cost of materials and supply chain right now. How much of that um, inflationary cost is, is in this budget and how much do you think it's kind of was before, let's say, three or four years ago? Uh, pre-COVID, would this bill have been a lot less and does it behoove us to? Obviously, we have to move forward and, and look at options, but what does, what is your predictor for the next coming couple of years? Cost, I saw that you had an inflationary of four point eight million. Um, but I just wonder if, if we've, we've, we see any costs getting better in, in time? Or are we really taking time bomb and how, how close to the tracks are we hugging?
Like, you know, my crystal ball is, is in the shop. Um, but it's the, the best minds around this are of the opinion that. Um, the cost drivers are, are long-term. Um, we have had some crazy volatility. Wood was up, wood is back down, metal is up, it probably will come down, plastics are up. Um, the, 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 we're probably never gonna, it's never going to go down to where it was before. Um, and our estimators predict about four to six percent per year of construction cost escalation. So if it costs you ten million dollars this year, that's going to be ten point six million dollars next year. And it's going to be a hundred and six percent of ten point six million dollars the year after that. Um, so. Um, that's, that's the, the, the best thinking at this time. That construction cost more or less only goes up and it went up a little bit more steeply overall, over the past couple of years.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that it will be driven by the vision that all that of what you want for a school. Because if you stick with what we've got.
Yeah, we, emergency after emergency.
Yeah, yeah.
I was going to add a, I was going to add a few more nuggets for folks to respond to the earlier question. So Vermont has been, has had a moratorium on school construction aid since two thousand and seven. Uh, it was suspended, it used to be that they would reimburse thirty percent, I think, of the cost. That was suspended two thousand and seven, it has not been restarted. One of the partners at my firm was working with the, the legislature and Jeffrey Francis at this, the Monster Return Association. Back in two thousand and twenty, twenty twenty-one. Uh, and they were able to pass Act Seventy Two, which is, which was a, the state's first blush. At what is the state's, uh, overall facility assessment? And what's, what's it going to cost for this, for the state to? Help, you know, or what's, what's, what's the total state burden of this problem? Uh, at least identify that as a starting point. There were several discussions, although there were not enough legislatures, legislators with enough. Political will to, to talk about restarting school construction aid, so that's. I think just another conversation that is bandied about and no, no real progress there yet. Although they are looking at, I think as part of Act Seventy Two, they're redrafting some of the standards. In anticipation of something happening. You know, we, we've. I've got a back of the napkin estimate that I've been working on. I personally walked through and evaluated about fifteen percent of the building stock in the state with my own two eyes. It was about twenty million square feet of building stock in the state. So twenty million square feet, we're seeing renovation costs between three hundred and three hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. So you can do the math, that's fifty, six billion dollars of deferred maintenance in the state of public schools. Danville is one, one piece of that. So it's, it's a, it's a widespread issue, it's not an issue that you're facing alone and. There's, you know, some pretty heavy discussions to be had about what to do next.
Excellent question.
Yes, thank you. And I'm so sorry, I apologize because I missed the beginning. Is this completely new infrastructure that we're talking about? Just like on a quick like.
We don't know, there's three different options.
Okay, I caught just the end of that, yeah.
One of the three options would be to build a new.
Okay, but you've also given some estimates then with regards to trying to fix the existing structure.
Yeah, so if you were to fit, we, that, that number, if you were to, to not make any changes, no additions. No program moves, just the rooms as they are now and just fix what you have. That's probably in the neighborhood of about thirty-two plus million dollars over the next, let's say five to ten years.
And that was the lowest option.
That's, well, that's, that, that's not really one of our design options, but that's just to put a backstop. On, you know, we always get this question from the community, hold on, timeout, how much just to fix what we have?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's the reality, thirty-three million dollars, just to fix thirty-two point and change. You know, and, and again, part of this is like. So if you are going to go through and replace, uh, heating and ventilation systems, if you're going to go through and replace plumbing systems. You know, like, one of the things that happens is, you know, this, this room has no sprinklers, right? So you're going to have to add sprinklers. When you go in and you start taking those old systems down, you find that, for instance, the data network has been installed. At, you know, because data is, is new since the building was built, it's at the lowest in the ceiling and sometimes it's just draped on top of the ceiling. So when you pull the ceiling out, now you've got a mess of cables, right? And the, the, the fire marshal is going to come in and say, you can't have that, either hang it back up, make a need or get rid of it. And a lot of times you can't just hang it back up out of the way and then continue doing construction. So when you do an infrastructure project to get to your, is your question, that thirty-three million dollars represents. Basically replacing the infrastructure in the building wholesale. Because you can't replace the infrastructure on top without replacing the things that are in between you and the infrastructure.
Yeah, back to when you were saying about this school similar to our situation, it was like, did you say it started at sixty million and then went down? They got down to forty million?
Well, yeah, what, what we do is, and I was meant to illustrate that. When we get a, we get a cost estimate from our estimators, the professional cost estimators in this project, we use a company named Realms. They're out of Boston and Vancouver and they do, you know, millions and millions of square feet of estimates a year. And they will give us a, a, an estimate based on the documentation that we provide. And then we have to engage in a process of checking their assumptions. Checking their calculations, asking about the kind of outlier numbers, you know, I basically go down through and I check the, the top ten things. Top ten most expensive items in the estimate and I'm checking quantities and if the quantities all work out. Then I, I start to do a little bit less spot checking because then there's diminishing returns as the line items get smaller and smaller. It's, it's less, there's less bang for your buck in sort of questioning those assumptions. But we find that it's, we usually take those estimates and we are trying to drive them down to what we think is, represents. Real quality assumptions about what needs to happen and what's been done. Because we're operating with very kind of high-level documents at this point, you know. So that, I, I said that, but I didn't, I didn't mean to be unclear. We believe that that project has a real deferred maintenance cost of about fifty million dollars. And it's about a hundred and forty thousand square feet. This project is about eighty-five thousand square feet existing today. So a, a deferred maintenance cost of thirty, in the neighborhood of thirty million dollars is, tracks pretty well. So, and we're, we have, we, we've seen this on a number of schools. So we have to kind of attack the cost estimating a few different ways to really get real numbers. Or what we think are real numbers, because that's the numbers that we give you like today are going to be the ones that stick in everybody's head. Regardless of what assumptions were made. Sure, you know what I mean? So we want, we really want to have confidence in them. So I was trying to just illustrate that. It's not like we didn't just get a, a number and trot it out there, we spent a number of months. Trying to get comfortable with this because we knew it was going to be, you know.
A bond goes twenty years, a bond can be twenty years loan.
Can be thirty, thirty, thirty. Can be thirty, twenty, twenty's pretty common, I think, uh. I think the Winuski School did a thirty-year loan from USDA.
Which was on the board.
Crazy, but it's like one percent or something.
So this is, this is a last taken, obviously, and I think that. Is anybody having more questions, we want to take deep breaths?
I'm, I caught my breath. Just, um, um, you know, is calorie record on right now?
No, not, not, they will be tomorrow. This will be in the paper Friday.
She asked me to send her the video.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I think the, the reality is.
So yeah.
Talk anymore about.
Oh, none, right, none of this is going to be, and I talked to Rob about this once or twice, this is, this is not going to be something that, that you just go and say, what about seventy million? Let's go, we have to, we have to explain.
Well, and the need.
We have to explain the deficiencies, we have to explain the ongoing goal, we have to explain not spending good money after bad. We have to do repeatedly and we have to, anybody will listen.
Right, and when you talk about over the long term and you're talking about over a thirty-year thing and you're like, oh, well, it's a difference of ten million dollars to get. Your dream new school.
Right.
Potentially ten million more, you know, and that's the thing, if we're talking about ten million difference between.
Well, the bottom, the, the numbers are actually the same and then one went up and one was fudgy.
Well, that's right, but that's what I'm saying, it's like, so, so. You know, if that's, if that's the reality of the situation.
So I think that's, yeah, I think where we are, yes or no?
In Anchorage, in that school, this or those, in that one, um, if you begin. Any debate with the money. You will lose it.
Absolutely.
Uh, you have to explain what the existing school needs, okay? And then perhaps end with the market, but you have to get that out front.
Start with why.
That's why.
Really good advice, well, start with why.
Well, I think the day's most point is the newspaper, you can start with the money. The newspaper, yeah, the big numbers and those works, so those big numbers are going to be in the newspaper pretty quick here, so. And then from.
So any discussion from now on is going to be seventy million dollars, but we can get that down. You know, it's, it's a sticker shot.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, as a side note, I mean, my first question was, what is the building that we're in worth? The building is about six point nine million.
That's estimated value?
Yeah, the property is a hundred thousand. Seven million dollars.
Yeah, so.
Border to border.
That's a, that's, that's an interesting, that's an interesting number.
And somebody, please prove me wrong, I mean, I'm hoping that's, but I'm, I'm going by an assessment thing that I can.
Today's housing market, it should be more than that.
All right, well, your next question, are we underinsured? I, I don't know where that, I didn't know that anybody bothered to place a value.
They put, it's in the town report every year and it's, 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 it's a modestly small number for.
Has it ever changed over?
If it does, it's incrementally larger, but not.
Have the listeners ever been here? I don't, I don't, I don't mean to be fluff, but I'm not sure what that.
I'd estimate the replacement cost at around forty-seven million.
Yeah.
For this building, as it sits today. For not, not with the addition, not with the expansions, just to replace this building today. I'd estimate that, uh, you know, this is, I just did it, I just did one calculation, so it's, it's not the greatest estimate, but. Yeah, forty-five to fifty million, depending on.
It's like my truck after three years, it's depreciated, so this is all depreciation and building and.
Exactly, so, so.
For me to get a brand new truck, obviously it's going to cost a lot more.
And, and we, and we, you know, if you thought, if you think about the, the cost of replacement as the building value, it makes a lot more sense. Because you're talking about basically rebuild costs of. You know, thirty-two out of forty-six, so it's close to seventy percent of the cost of replacement would be. To re, to just repair and renovate the existing structure. We don't, uh, this is not our specialty. Although we can help, we can point towards resources on this, but. Big facility managers who are working on like major campuses, uh, you know, big universities where they've got, you know, millions of square feet to manage. And dozens of buildings, they use what's called a facilities condition index, which is.
I've used that at the last.
Yeah, you, you use that to, to, to try and figure out which, which buildings are you going to work on next? And which buildings are you just not going to work on again because it's not worth it, so you sunset the building, right? So what they, and I can, I can send, if people are interested in this information, I can send it for the board to ponder. You know, the, the tipping point is, is around seventy percent. Typically where, because you think about it like a car, if you have a, you've got a car that's worth ten thousand bucks. And someone tells you that you could have a brand-new car for, for fifteen, or you could rebuild your existing car for ten thousand. But by the way, you're, it's a fifty-five, you know. De Soto, it's not even like a nice classic, it's like, you know, it's just a regular run-of-the-mill car, are you really going to? Are you going to spend, it's worth ten thousand bucks, but are you going to spend seven thousand to repair it when it'd still be left with a fifty-year-old car? That's, that's the kind of question that we, as architects, we can't, we can only ask that question, we can't answer it.
So I have a question from the, from Sarah Walsh. Sarah, I'm sorry to cut you off.
This is very hard to interject on Zoom. Um, I just, I wanted to see if Mark, you could re-explain the. I know, I know we can't give definitive numbers, but the impact of the Ed Fund versus, you know, thinking of seventy million dollars as a whole sum. Isn't what we would be bringing back to the taxpayers and just making sure that that's maybe a little clearer. I know it's, we can't nail down a number, but.
Basically, right now, this year, if we, if we had done this, we'd spend all this money this year or done the bond this year.
You put the people back on the screen.
And Cam, can I get a copy of this?
Of the presentation?
Yeah, that is linked to the minutes, okay, great.
Okay, um, so what I, what I was mentioning before is. Because of the way that, uh, it finance works in Vermont, the, the total cost of education spending. In, in any school budget is split up, is put between three different sources typically, okay? In, in the case of Danville, Danville is, is classified as a receiving town, meaning that it gets more revenue out of the Ed Fund than it pays in. So the education fund is kind of the circular fund, the Danville taxes go into the Ed Fund. And then, uh, and then the Ed Fund returns money to Danville to operate the school. So roughly, uh, roughly sixty-eight, well, seventy percent or so of. The education spending in any budget year is money that's contributed, that's put into the Ed Fund. Paid into the Ed Fund by the town clerk from tax collections. Uh, and the sources of that are the residential taxpayers and the non-residential taxpayer. So it's a, you know, people that live in the town and houses in the town and basically it's people that own camps on, you know, on Joe's Pond. Mostly the non-residential taxpayer. But because Danville doesn't have a tax base large enough to completely pay for. Pay for its education costs, the remaining twenty-five percent or so of the budget comes out of the Ed Fund. And the Ed Fund is made up of money, uh, all of the sales tax revenue in Vermont goes into the Ed Fund. All of the, you know, when you've heard for years, the lottery fund returns a hundred percent of its proceeds to education, that money's dumped in. All the taxes from liquor sales and a few other things like that. Uh, and we get back in ten, in Danville because we're a receiving town, the additional twenty-five or so percent of our budget. So the point being is that, I mean, when we get down to a final number and we're talking to the community about what's the real impact. I think Cam shared with us up in Winuski that their, their, their residential taxpayers in Winuski are only paying for forty-one percent. Or forty-one cents on the dollar for this school renovation.
Yeah, because the way it works is the amortized bond payments are actually entered as a line item in your school budget. So they're part of that money that, you know, the, the school says, here's the budget, Ed Fund, give me back money to pay for this. So when the, when the amortized bond payments are included in, in the school budget, it means that they're, they're subject to that same split. The revenue that is paying for the school budget, right? Because it's not like, it's not like there's a separate bucket of money, your, your amortized bond payments are part of the budget to operate the school. So it's, it's, it's a way that cost is shared.
And if we. If we were looking at it this year, Mark, you had said it's closer to like thirty-five percent. Or thirty-five cents of dollar.
Give me a second.
You just, you just told us thirty-one percent.
I just, I wanted to make sure that was clear because when Dave and I heard that information, it, it's still a lot of money. But it, it's a very different number.
All right, so I'm talking a little bit, so this year, the, the tax percentage breakdown, residential taxpayers are paying thirty-six percent of the school budget. Uh, non-residential thirty-nine percent and the twenty-five, remaining twenty-five percent comes back from the Ed Fund because we're a receiving district. Um, the other thing, because we have some new board members, so I wonder if I could, it might be useful to point out that. We started down this path because we're out of room in the school building, so I, you know, I think. It's interesting to talk about replacement costs of the existing building. But if, if we were to like magically tear down the structure and rebuild it exactly as it was, we'd still have a school that wasn't big enough. And so, uh, we don't want to, you know, I don't want people to think, well, that's, that's forty-six million dollars, let's do that, that's cheap. You know, well, you're going to end up with, you know, you're going to end up with a renovated car that's still, you know, isn't big enough. So, you know, we need a minivan and we're driving a Volkswagen right now, so.
Just sort of related to this, is there a way to be able to gauge? Grants and funding to be able to present that information to the community? Grants and funding to be able to present that information to the community so they can actually start juggling numbers? Like, is it just being advertised like these are our three options? Or is there a way to say, these grants are available, this money will be available, this is like our best estimate? So people can, we've got inflation. People are concerned about taxes and boarding that. So what's the best package that could be presented to the people so they have a sense?
We don't have all of that today.
What anyone have that for you?
We're not sure. We're not there yet. We're just. We're going to have to do that.
I'm just wondering.
When we when we get ready to go to a bond vote, we're going to have to be able to explain to the community. This is what we're asking for, and this is how we're going to pay for it, okay? And it and hopefully we're, you know, if it's a seventy million dollar project, hopefully by the time we're ready to do that, we'll have a sense that there may be some money coming from other sources. But we're going to have to buy, we're going to have to borrow some money to do this. And then there'll be a lot of discussion about. What it's really going to cost based on where we can get financing. You know, that we're just, I, you know, we're not quite there yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was wondering how it was presented, so community members could have that input.
They will when we have it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I was just going to add to Alan's point too, what I was going to say earlier about. Just the community engagement piece, it seems like that's the most critical part of this whole process. So I don't know if that's something that you all facilitate, but us having some guidance on. The best way to roll that out to the community and what we should be doing in that aspect. Is that something that you all provide or do we seek outside sources for that?
Yeah, we can help with that, but there are problems with other players that you want to get involved to. Like, we've seen success in hiring, uh. Companies that could do videos, can come in and actually take videos of the school, can take the pictures of of bad stuff.
Yeah, that's that was actually.
You know, the other things that we find that are strategies that really work well are building tours. Because then you the people, people who are in the town can actually walk through with the architects and we can point at things. And we can and we can talk about the issues that are faced, that are facing people face to face. And it's it's. It's a little bit better than sort of a fact sheet.
Yeah.
You know, presentations to the community that are offered where you have, you know, you provide dinner and daycare. So that people in the community can come and get fed and there's kids can go into one of the classrooms with. With daycare and they can get a presentation and they can focus on it.
Yeah.
That works. I mean, you got to take people out to salons, you got to, um, you know, if you got people in the community that are. If you got people in the community that are that are that you predict are going to be strong proponents or strong detractors. You take them out one on one, take them out for coffee. You know, like all of these things. So it's community presentations, it's it's flyers in the mail. It's it's public presentations, uh, it's building tours and and, you know, we think that. You typically need to have about, you need, the board needs to be ready to call the question about three months. Before the actual vote, even though you really only need to warn it about a month. If the board's not comfortable and you've got less than three months, then it's probably a sign that that you're not ready. But that would mean that, you know, we would basically spend the summer trying to communicate and educate the community on the need. I think Rob's comment is exactly right. You start with the why. And you and you focus on, and it's like the Sunday morning talk shows, people are going to keep gravitating towards that. Almighty dollar question, but I think you have to always bring them back to the why. Because the the dollars and cents, I mean, they don't change. They, I mean, that that story just continues to get worse. So it's it's, I think, reorienting people to the needs and the and the reasons why you're pursuing renovations in the first place. Is the only way to really build momentum and consensus.
Is there a cost estimate on how that gets put together and presented? The copies and all the way that you just said that you would present the idea, like, does that have like a package number on it or what?
So like we said, we just opened this up and we're going to, we're going to, so we're going to go back now to just board only discussion for a couple of minutes. So we're going to, we're going to close it down because I think that we might be, we're coming in on the end of this.
Yeah.
And we're asking you questions that are outside of your milieu and you're saying other people should be better for that and we can't answer their questions.
Yeah, we can help you point towards people who've done this successfully.
We'll be in touch about that. Does anybody on the board have any additional questions for Cam or for Richard? I just wanted to state that, um, the information I got this off was access G I S dot com was the information on the. He gives all the listing of their properties. I've seen it on the town reports. They they listen to town reports as a small number, that's why. I thought it was less than ten million for sure. I don't think it's right, but I mean, clearly it's not right, but. So I think, um, what I'd like to, what would be convincing to me is the the properties, or excuse me, the the building is this much. The assessment. What is a. An accurate brand new. Facility, just like this, same size, same everything, going to have to replace the pipes and everything like that. Tell me that number. Forty six.
Forty six million.
Forty six million.
I mean, that's.
To take out every wall and put in correct wiring.
That's out of, that's out of, that's out of thin air, but that's based on a host of information and a lot of experience in the field. And a pretty current information from similar projects. So we can confirm that and send a communication. That sort of puts those things all in context, if if it's helpful. So you can have a cheat sheet of those things. You know, an expansion of the slide that has the kind of breakdown.
Yeah. So that addresses most some of the safety, but not the space issue. So.
Right, goes and addresses.
Not at all. Not at all.
Yeah, it would be a brand, I mean, it would be a brand new school. Be a brand new school, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't have the right capacity.
Right.
Right, exactly. But I think that's, I think that's a good place to start where. You know, it's forty six million. But here are your other problems. It's right. It's currently, it's currently zero, but the first thing that you do makes it forty six million. Right. If you do nothing, if you do absolutely nothing, it's zero. But if you do something and you do it correctly, it's forty six million. Right. And you're working from there.
What we can do is we can communicate this stuff. We'll send the slide deck through and we can can communicate a a a list of these things. And and some of the items that we've talked about today is potential talking points. So that, uh, people on the board. Don't get blindsided by community members and not have, uh, some idea of 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 what what we're talking about.
Stay out of Marty.
I just think we also need to, you know, I I said, you know, the starting, it was just that like the starting point is we need to talk about the forty six million, but. The starting point is we need to talk about the space issue, the safety concerns and why we're looking at our school as a whole. And the missed opportunities that our kids could. Right, like right now, we have a huge amount of missed opportunities because we don't have the space, because we don't have. These specific things that that our school community. Who was all had input on this, I was saying, these are the things that will really provide a great education for our kids. And that's. That's the conversation and learning to start. And then we can. You know, maybe create all that other stuff, but I, but we really need to. To focus our dialogue on on what's happening with our children who are here. And the opportunities that we can provide for them. And and why this space is no longer adequate for that.
For me. Those discussions are going to take it from forty six to seventy million. But I think we really need to set the. You know, the replacement cost and then those discussions are going to. So yeah, that's why we need to do, you know, this many more million dollars and. Everybody's going to. Completely ignore that stuff, but. For for me to get to seventy. I'm okay on the forty six, you know, just.
It's hard.
If that's our discussion, but but all the other needs is going to have a price and.
I get it. I totally get it. So I think that, um, the other thing we might be able to do is very, is with. Some amount of, uh, speed. Pull out for you what some of those talking points might be on the Y. And a lot of them come directly out of the facility evaluation report that we did back in two thousand nineteen, which which talked about some of the issues related to health, safety, welfare code violation, stuff like that.
Okay, Dave's showing me a question.
Great.
I just wanted to highlight that piece about, um. So what the need is, and I think that is important too, to make sure that. That we're capturing things like that forty six, forty seven million dollars includes windowless classrooms again. It includes, um. Some of the the small spaces, you know, we're educating kids that windows. So one of the things Sarah and I would like to actually do is we've talked about having board meetings in different spaces. Um, I think that's, you know, as we're bringing the public in, I think it's important.
Bring people in one of those small classrooms.
Yeah.
We need, we need to be talking about and talking enough is the opportunity that exists to bring in more high school students. Then with a with better facility, you bring in more high school students. And we make, we bring in right now eight hundred thousand dollars maybe in tuition that what and all it does. Is gives us more kids to teach and lowers the cost of everybody's taxes in town. But we're taking eight hundred thousand dollars or so, seven ninety, I think it was in the last one. We're bringing in revenue that is allaying the cost right now that we could. Repurposed to a degree to this exact job. And so that money currently comes in and we can look back through some of the past numbers and you sort of have that topic point in your back pocket as well is that. There is money that's been being used now. To make your life cheaper for years. And what we've done when we changed the curriculum in twenty fourteen and did a better focus and we had this administration come in to better focus on educating children. Is that we have invited more and sought out more children to teach the high school level to fill out our seats that would be empty, that would otherwise be empty. And they they come in, they're paying customers and different than the other ones, they're paying customers. And that money can be used toward this goal. Toward the toward the paying of this bill, but you're going, you're still going to see, you're going to see it, but this is this is saving that you've been seeing. So we have to look, I'll look up, I'll look up those numbers and put them in the past report, but that is that that is actual. Six digits with with the first number that can be talked about as a topic.
The project is is potentially disruptive, even the even. Thinking about a project like this is disruptive. To to at least a certain community members. So the whole issue of talking points, uh, is it should be a collaboration. We can start the ball rolling and I think probably, uh, David and and Sarah and Mark can add some 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 flesh to those bones and. We'll we'll work together on making sure that we have. Messaging for people to use in all various forms.
I have two very quick things, please. Um, parking. It is very important on, uh, number one and number two, it takes away that parking parking area and. So adequate parking and then handicap accessible parking. Is huge for me. The other one is. The school, what will be the student capacity? If you're going to build a a school that will. That will have four hundred children, you know, pre-kata. It it's the same building we got here. Is it going to be able to accommodate five hundred children?
The short, the short answer is that, uh, capacity can be calculated in a few different ways, but we believe that the capacity. Option one and option two and by default, option three would be in the neighborhood of four hundred and fifty. That's that there's some flex in that though, because you have to, there's, there's a couple of ways to calculate capacity. There's classroom capacity, uh, and that and classroom capacity can be policy based or it can be actual physical space based. So by policy, oftentimes people have. Sometimes more, sometimes less than you should have in a classroom. And it's not a hard and fast rule either. You design a classroom for twenty kids, can you put twenty two in it one year?
Yes.
Does it have eighteen in it some year? Yes. But if you were going to build the plan, then we would put the capacity at around four hundred and fifty, four hundred and sixty. For that, for the option one and option two.
I would also add to the parking piece, traffic flow, that was part of what I remember from watching. The past presentations was the new suggestion, suggestion altered traffic flow, which is. It's a safety issue and a huge consideration that I think goes along with the parking need.
I, so I actually think that the drawings offer us more parking spots than we currently have. Um, and we had overruled any. Disruption under route two of the traffic flow because of that. And so have a. We created a an internal parking lot structure, um, flow. That is safer than what is currently.
The way I remember, we got a rule by the state.
Well, the A R T.
Okay.
No.
They were like, well, is there anything else you could do?
But but I mean, I think any new, any new, um, parking lot, new parking structures is going to have concrete as opposed to just random dirt that ends wherever the dirt ends. And maybe lines.
Yeah, it would be. It would be, you know, it would be real.
I mean.
There are so many different rabbit holes to go down, so I don't want to go down them all, but I will just say that, like, for instance, one of the things that's baked into the option one plan that was more. Developed and had a site plan and everything, uh, is things like. The, well, Act sixty four, which requires stormwater. Changes to all existing sites with more than three acres of impervious surface, which is one of these sites. So those, those are the types of regulatory. Requirements that the legislature has, you know, it's another one, another unfunded mandate. Um, and you wouldn't engage in any sort of serious construction on the school grounds without addressing that need as well. So. To do that, you've got to have real parking surfaces, you've got to have curbs, you've got to have drainage and lots, you've got to have places for the stormwater to be treated on site before it leaves the site. So it's. You know, those site costs for that option one were in the neighborhood of six and a half million dollars. That's not the building, that's the site costs. And that was partially to deal with those kinds of regulatory issues and just provide real parking that's maintainable and safe. So. There's a lot of different.
Just to to chime in there, you know, with with option two, we also did do a preliminary site plan design that included. Areas of parking and a bus turnaround internally. With a suggestion perhaps of a of a signalized intersection, if that was, uh, you know. But anyway, we we do have parking shown with option two as well.
Yeah, yeah, we're we'd be providing about a hundred new spots or about a hundred spots total rather. The the city ordinance says it requires a hundred and forty, but we think that they're going to. Bend and about a hundred is really what you, really closer to what you need. So. Then you have forty or fifty right now.
I had a miles on the day, they they developed a review board and we addressed that as reducing. But in your option. Is it equal with your other options on the landscaping?
It would, it would be. I mean, we don't, obviously, there's no design yet.
There's that that old.
The original nineteen thirty seven structure. Oh, 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 I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, I mean, that option hasn't been drawn yet. So right now, it's just a bubble on the on the plan, but it would, the intention would be that it's.
That or.
It's equivalent, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But easier to build.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and actually, it's could be, it would be a nice arrangement to have it all kind of down on the on the flat.
Right.
You leave the upper portion the way it is with the baseball field and the tennis courts and the basketball and everything. There was a lot of invasive. It was pretty invasive to try and relocate parking up on the hill.
Yep.
Blasting and.
That's that's a nightmare, the way that Route Two was supposed to come in here. Uh, supposed to be lowered, but with the, uh, the ledge, it was just.
Yeah, I can't.
It was impossible. That's why.
And that's why the, that's why this building steps down.
Yeah.
So we've got lots of legs.
So I think, so where we, so where we are is we we are looking for from probably I guess administration, we're looking for. Some sort of a presentation to come. And then we're looking and then they'll look to you for guidance. On how to, and they'll look to you for contacts on who to contact to help us maybe put together something that we can start showing to the community. And then amongst the board members ourselves, we're looking to work on our messaging and we, you know. Can't conduct much business online, but we can probably have some of this summarized in the minutes. And get an idea of what we're going to say and then read the newspaper. Figure out what's said there, but when we're talking to people, we want to talk about the deficiencies of the building. We want to talk about the lack of opportunity for these kids that we're currently educating, for the opportunity that exists for the kids that we could be educating. And for the, um, the working conditions of people that work here, they could do a better job if they had better spaces. In addition to the ADA compliance and the and the and the, uh, the the various expenditures. And then you remind them of the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars that we almost had to spend, but didn't. A couple of years ago on the energy recovery units in in an emergency, and remind them of two hundred and ten thousand dollars that we just put back into the wood ship boiler that is integral to. The new one, but the old, a new plan, but not a a new new plan. So I maybe.
We kept it in both option one, option two.
But not option three. So now that's.
Unless you kept that, we kept to keep that little building.
District and you got to just, I just turned that into. Yeah, just a big bunch of piping. But but I mean, your messaging has to be, your messaging can't be seventy million dollars. It's got to be, we have things that are deficient. And so it get, and but you're good, what you're going to hear back is seventy million dollars. And you're going to hear it again and again. And you have to sort of redirect people's minds and it's going to be, this is going to be a one at a time thing and then hopefully even get start getting them in groups as soon as we get some sort of a presentation going. But for right now, we're looking at one at a time. One at a time, put your hands behind your back and just wait patiently until they stop talking and then remind them that we could be educating these children better and that these are our children and that they have a right to education. The vision, the vision of that place is to educate these children better, more effectively and in rooms with windows.
You can always remind, you can always remind people kindly that it's not, it's not a done deal. You know, there's, there's options and what we really need is engagement in the process from people. So if you're, if you're upset or scared about seventy million dollar price tag, I am too. And believe me, and and so let's get some engagement, let's have some conversations, let's really get to the bottom of this.
I think those projections, like we're saying, Mark, on what really is the impact for the taxpayer here. They see that seventy million and that's scary, but what is the actual impact on the taxpayers in our town is a different number.
Eventually, the eventually the number you want to know is what is the the tax impact on an average, you know, a median sized homestead. So if it's, if a median home is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Danville, what's the tax impact on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homestead? Either sensitized or not, and that's the number that people are gonna care about.
So, hey, thanks for the question. We're moving to, we're gonna close this one out for tonight, we're probably gonna have this one on the agenda again. And this is gonna be something that we'll talk about in a minute, talking about public comment, this will probably be something that community members are allowed to come and talk about. So stakeholders and community members, people that own property in the town, but for now, we're gonna go on to the next. And thank you, Cam, thank you, Richard. The information.
Yep, and it will be available for their future meetings, so it might be remote, but if it's important, we, you know, I live in central Vermont, so we come back to help field some of those questions for people.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Richard. So what I'd like to do now is thank Sabrina Brown for her great patience and offer her the floor to make the presentation.
Thank you. I'm just gonna see if I can share. I can't. So this is about ten to twelve slides, just to give you guys kind of an overview of the new special education rules. And so this slide looks like a lot of information, I'm gonna summarize it, but in two thousand and sixteen, the AOE commissioned two studies. The first one was the UVM study at a university of Vermont and the second one was a DMG study out of Massachusetts that came to Vermont. And so both reports, it's kind of what's driving the special education rule change, which is Act one seventy three. For the UVM report, it really focused on evaluated the special education funding. Whereas the DMG report compared current practices to best practices and what's best practice for special education students in the delivery model. And so one of the new changes is the parent input change, and so the federal government has always required parents to have an active voice in their students' plans. The Vermont is taking that a little bit further to say that after parents receive minutes from the IP meeting and receive a copy of the drafted IP that they have ten days to respond in writing. That will go into directly into the IP to have a specific section, word for word of what the parent has said. So the implications of that is really that we have to have meetings about ten to twenty days earlier, but we do have to give the parents that voice and usually right now in Vermont, we give the parent voice at the IP meeting. Moving forward, we have to give them a spot in the IP, but we have to give them that that ten days to be able to respond. Another new area is the specific learning disability and this is one of two areas that at the AOE state level right now, I'm not sure if it's gonna pass to be implemented July first. Yesterday, Jackie Keller, the director of special ed for special education for Vermont spoke to see what that's gonna look like. A lot of school districts and SUs are really pushing this, this one area in adverse effect to be upheld. So right now, we use a one point five discrepancy model and in this model, we compare students cognitive ability to their basic skill area. And so the the state of Vermont is moving away from this. Right now Vermont is one of six states that currently uses this model, so this is an older model that we've had in place for about eighteen years. So IP's teams will be looking at, so school districts will be looking at a patterns of strength weaknesses model or response to intervention model. So we're really going to be looking kind of towards our MTSS, our multi-tiered system of support structure and one of those two models, and it's really up to the SU to determine whether we're gonna look at the patterns of strengths or weaknesses or an I RTI model or a combination thereof. Another area is adverse effect. And so for the disability categories of deaf and blindness and specific learning disability, we no longer need to find adverse effect. And so in the past, we've had to show that the students in the lowest fifteenth percent in one of, or in one basic skill area in three of six measurements. So those two disability categories, we will no longer need to do that. Also, the current rule states that we need to show the basic fifteenth percent and the new rule really just states that they need to show adverse effect. And there's no clear definition in the state law right now that determines or defines adversely effect on educational performance. So the student just has to be below their grade peers, but it doesn't specify how low below the grade peers. So old, old rule says to determine whether a child's disability has adverse effect on educational performance. The evaluation planning team must determine students functioning significantly below grade level. At that, this point, it doesn't need to be significantly below grade level, it just needs to be that they're below grade level and they're failing to respond to intervention at the school level. Another one is functional skills and that's a new basic skill area. So I did list the current seven basic skill areas. So oral expression, listening comprehension, written expression, basic reading skills, reading comprehension, math calculation, math reasoning and motor skills. So that's what we've always looked at in the state of Vermont. And so starting July first, we'll also be looking at the students' functional skills. And that can really determine a variety of different pieces, both academically, socially and physically, and how they function across those three settings. One of the biggest rule changes is the definition of special education itself. So it's supposed to provide flexibility in design for specially designed instructions so that old rule stated special education means specially designed instruction that cannot be provided within the school's standard instructional conditions or provided through the school's education supportive system, a system of support. And the new rule clearly just states special education means specially designed instruction. Under the new funding formula, right now, we currently receive fifty six cents per dollar on our time studies of special education. Teachers related service providers provide. Next year, we're moving to a grant, a block grant. We're going to get one lump sum at the SU level. And so under the special education definition, any provider including an interventionist, reading interventionist, writing interventionist, math interventionist, who provides services to special education can be funded through that block grant. So we'll use the block grant for all special education providers, our SLPs, our occupational therapists, our special educators. If there's money left over, which at this point I don't anticipate there will be because our block grant is expected to be significantly lower than what we've spent over the last three to four years. But if we did have extra funds, we would be able to provide or use some of those funds for the interventionist positions, but right now, special education services can only be provided by a related service provider or a special educator. The new rule states that any expert teacher or expertise can provide special education services to students. One of the other areas is goal writing, they've really implemented pertinent data is a key word. So they're really looking at what data is the SU collecting and what data are we collecting on students and are we using that data to inform? And that's where the RTI model and the patterns of strength and weakness model also comes in. What data are we using to inform that the student below grade peers? And then how are we monitoring the student's progress and what data are we using? So they're really gonna be looking at a variety of different assessments that we use. And so I didn't want to go into too deep, but I'm happy to answer any questions. You're interested to know kind of what we've been doing to prepare, we've been doing monthly meetings with special educators about two hours per month. We've been meeting with the SLPs about every other month, we have five SLPs. And so their big role will really be around that functional piece. I anticipate some more communication will fall into the functional skills. And then we have an assessment team with our school psychologist evaluator and one of the SLPs. We've been meeting once to two times a month to really look at what is that pertinent data look like, what is the evaluations? And then the agency of education has been having meetings monthly and we've been attending, both Ally and I have been attending that. I know some building principals are also attending and we've been rolling out some information to building principals as well as the special educators. Our school psychologist, Dr. Ellie, recently attended a patterns of strengths and weakness training through New York, through school psychologists. And then in May, we're also going to an SLD in the strengths and weakness workshop. And I'm sending my whole entire assessment team, Ally and I are also attending, so we can prepare on what that looks like. Again, I don't necessarily anticipate, we'll, we'll know more and about, I, probably by the end of this week. Dr. Keller, who's the director of special ed, again, she spoke, asked schools to fill out a survey over the weekend around our readiness around adverse effect in the specific learning disabilities. So we will know hopefully by Friday. I anticipate all the other rules, including the block grant, to go start July first. But those are the two, only two areas at this time, I anticipate maybe being extended for another year. I think that's it. I didn't want to go, I'm happy to dive deeper into each of the rules, but I wanted to kind of give an overview, but not overwhelm with all the rules. Any questions?
I'm just wondering, and I, and I don't know if it's a you question or if it's a sort of, if it's an everybody question, but um I'm wondering if you, given the fact that now interventionists can provide special services, if you anticipate that affecting staffing at all? And because it can certainly affect your, your distribution of staff and how you use them in a building. So I'm wondering if sort of long term, you anticipate that would change or impact the number of like interventionists or special educators within our system.
I think that's a great question. I think we need to be careful on how we use our interventionists. So we do as part of MTSS, need to be providing tier one and tier two instructions, so really interventionists pick up at tier two. And so we can have a student with a disability but not have be adversely affected and like a student with ADHD that maybe is at grade peer. So they could be tier two or be on a five oh four. So we need to be careful that we're not now having all of our tier two interventionists that we currently have going into tier three. I also think we need to be really careful. We have some reading interventions that are wonderful and there are some students that might need a specific type of reading instruction. And so just like each, every teacher and just like special educators, we all have our strengths and weaknesses, so being really careful on what type of instruction are they providing and how they're providing that. But I do know that all of our seven schools are looking at different tier two and potentially tier three reading interventionist and writing and math interventionist. I also think the other piece we need to look at, especially the new functional skills, is that social emotional piece. We've also had an increase of students post COVID coming in into pre K, but also coming back from COVID, you know, being away in remote learning with more trauma. Did I answer your question?
Kind of.
I think we need, I think it's going to have an impact on teaching positions, but I think we need to be careful because we need to make sure that we're providing the services in tier two and not just pushing all of our students to tier three.
Yeah, I just also know that there's just, there tends to be overlap between tier two and tier three simply because of who is because who needs to be providing it. And so there's some opportunities there for redistribution with sort of, and I was just wondering if they were, if we're looking at it as a redistribution or if they're long term at effect stopping it off.
I think a little bit of both.
I want also, do you, so my question Sabrina is, you said this out of a block grant, but if you're performing under grade level, you are now qualifying for special education. So you talked earlier about some of the kids roll on and roll off of IP's. Is this a case where you're gonna see a lot more students rolling onto IP's? You had to guess? Obviously, you're, you're speculating, but if children performing below grade levels, you're gonna have, it seems like you're, that's gonna be a thing that pops up often and variable.
I think you need to have a robust tier two and tier one intervention, right? Just because the students performing below grade level, it's really, are they responding to intervention? So, you know, we have an educational support team at all of our schools. We have the EST referral. Typically speaking, we have students that are on that EST for six to eight weeks twice, and we look at the data and say, are they responding to intervention? And that's really where that tier two intervention teacher comes in to provide that service. If we feel like they need a more robust, you know, more than maybe one or two times a week of tier two intervention, they really need like five days a week of a specific program, one-on-one services or small group, that's really where the special education comes in. Do I feel like we're gonna have an increase of special education students? Absolutely. I think right now, we're using, as is the whole entire country, we're using information and testing material that was normed for students pre COVID ten years ago. So as a general rule, if we're looking at nationally normed assessments, all the students across the country are at least six months to a year and a half below, and that's the assessments that we're using. So I do think we'll see an increase, but I think if we're really solid on our tier two intervention or tier one, how we're accommodating all students and an inclusive practice, I think, you know, that will help decrease the, decrease the number of increasing students in special education.
Dave Shilling?
Just another point toward, to try to answer Tim's question. I don't see a big staff impact. Danville only has, when you back out all of the Esser positions, Danville only has two non-Esser funded interventionists, tier two interventionists right now for the entire school. So I, I think that there'll be, you know, I don't see a situation where you'd have an abundance of interventionists who things would shift to, because we really don't have many. I think the biggest story is tier one, flexible, what we're saying, like it gets back to how we, how we make sure that we're structuring tier one to accommodate kids in, you know, in that way.
Thank you, Sabrina. Do you have any more questions? Thank you for the presentation. Please keep us posted. Thanks, thanks again for your patience. Listen to the other thing, that was heavy. You, you want to go into the member policy or you want to skip ahead to the gym money? Dave, you want to do the gym money now, now that we're all primed? Or do you want to go?
If we did that, Clayton, maybe we could let Dave.
That's what I'm saying. Dave doesn't feel well. If we do the gym money, maybe Dave can check out for the rest of this stuff. When we, and we're gonna secretly name you true officer, but we'll get to that in a minute. Alright, so, but Dave, if you want to go with, so when you give the equipment that you're talking about, we can talk about, but we can't move any money on. But if you please catch us up and catch the new board members up, I didn't get a chance to show that to them before, because I didn't know what we were gonna talk about.
Sure, absolutely. Like, like y'all noticed, I went and put on two more layers while we were talking and it's seventy degrees in my house. Open to feel better soon. Um, this is, so the gym equipment is something that we had started to talk about pre COVID and then when COVID hit, it just, it was a a discussion that didn't happen. The issue is some of our, our installed equipment in the gym, specifically the basketball hoops, the curtain and the batting cage are in rough shape. The immediate issue came to light when we took down the two hoops that were on the sidewall of the gym so that you could play across the gym, which is essential for youth practices for our younger students. Those were screwed into a hollow wall, which wasn't good, and they were built with homemade materials, also not good. So when the bleachers were inspected, the immediate recommendation from that team was that those things had to come down and they did, but that's left us without the ability to play across the gym and to have as many youth practices. So fast forward, it's time to think about those again.
Two years ago, around twenty twenty, sorry, early twenty twenty or or late twenty nineteen or the other.
Like a month before COVID, I think it was, yeah, maybe right on that line. So we have three quotes for these three items. The other two are the, the curtain. Most gyms, you know, don't have a giant curtain anymore. They have a curtain that is raised and lowered from the ceiling to save space. Also the, the fasteners on that are in rough shape and it's, it's definitely at the end of its, whatever useful life it has. And the third is the batting cage that gets used for baseball and softball practice. Again, those get lowered, raised and lowered usually from the ceiling and in our case, well, I'll just leave it at that it's homemade. It's three wire, yep, three wires, some netting in between. When you put the thing up, the thing stays up until it has to come down because you can't, you can't take it up. It's a couple hour production to to put up, so there's no more basketball to be played in the gym when, once the batting cage is in place. And it's also not safe. So.
We just, we discussed these at board meetings then, and we were considering action and then the world changed drastically and this fell away. And I think that we immediately had to, we had emergencies.
When the gym wasn't used for a while.
Right, we didn't have. Yeah, there was nobody in the gym and there was nobody we could get to come and stock the equipment because you couldn't travel because.
So like I said, this wasn't worn. And so this is action that we can't take, but did you, you sent us proposals? Do we have?
Do you want to put those up or do you want me to?
Let me. We cut up what I've got here. I'm not sure how this is going to work on the screen share. We'll find out. What are y'all looking at right now on your screen? Six thirty five oh four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, scroll down.
This is a thirty thousand five forty.
Yep, so this is one of them. This is the, this is the, the backstops and this was about twenty three thousand before COVID, unfortunately. So it has jumped up quite a lot with the cost of materials. What this gets us is replacing the two winches on the two broken. There are two that are broken. One which doesn't work and the other one has a. A bucket to catch the oil hanging from it. So replaces the two broken winches. Gets two stationary backstops that are actually suspended from the ceiling, which is what they should be. And replaces the backboards on the main hoops and then moves those ones over to the stationary ones. Instead of putting new ones on, ones that aren't going to be used as much. It also puts safety straps. On the four folding backstops. Those are essentially, think about it like a seatbelt retractor. If something in the mechanism fails and that thing comes down, that it arrests the fall. Schools have those these days. So that's one of them. See what else we got here. Second one, eighteen eight thirty two. Is. Yep, so suspended batting cage. And the third one. Is eighteen one sixty nine, which is replacing this center curtains. So we're looking at, you know, thinking of Cam's. Talk about these like surprise numbers. We're looking at sixty seven thousand five hundred five dollars as a total for these quotes. I did have a conversation with Mike Contessi about where we are with our surplus, where we are with unrestricted funds. And Mike said, you guys have plenty of money. Don't worry about it, which is not something I usually hear from Mike. Usually he's a much more reserved character, but um, he said that the.
Yeah, it's not that we have plenty of money to worry about it. It's that, it's that we are authorized to spend money to operate a building. We're authorized to spend money to make us, to make the place safe to educate students and sports part of education.
I apologize.
I think a fair assessment of don't worry about it is we have money for this because this is important.
And we have money for this because we've.
In a minute, that was.
Responsible and we've kept. Yeah.
So we can't act on this right now, but I, I don't. Does anyone in the board have any questions about the safety here?
Um, I think it's fair to ask. Can these be done? Can these wait to be done until the new building? I, I know the answer is on the, on the basketball stuff, but. Is that stuff that can be? You know?
So.
It's a fair question. Sorry, go ahead, Sarah.
Well, I'm just trying to save your voice and you're welcome to answer it. I think two of the models. Involve keeping the gym as is, and so they would be usable in the gym. And then I think. We would definitely look at if we went with a total new build, the transferability of like a curtain and stuff. To, to a new space.
Yeah, in, in all of the models, the gym is the least touched. So if you, if we needed to.
Gym stays.
First two. Yeah.
Well, the new building, you gotta move everything. That's.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot about that part of the model.
But it's still going to have the cables, the netting and everything like that for the, the batting cage.
We need that.
Right, so. Equipment goes.
Have to reinstall it into a new building. I don't even want to look at number one or number two. Yeah, so. If it was number three, then. You haven't got to repurchase it, but just.
If it's cheaper to repurpose it, you could possibly repurpose it, but it may not even be cheaper to repurpose it depending on, who knows?
I would imagine you probably could. These are pretty standard items.
I think, and I think the other thing to remember too, is the timeline that Cam talked about for the build. Right, we're talking four to five years at the soonest. And basketball specifically is dramatically impacted by the lack of hoops on the side. And baseball, the baseball piece renders the gym. Not as ideally usable once it's set up, once the season starts, so.
I have two questions. Is this summer work? Is this school year work? That's one question.
This would be summer work.
Okay.
So we don't have to.
So this is, my second question is, is everything that we have well enough to get to limp us through to the end of this year?
Yes.
Or is this a?
Uh, no, this is not, you know, we've got one, we've got the batting cage up now. It's doing its thing. Basketball season's over, so there's no need for those hoops right now. Nothing is imminent.
But it comes, it comes now well enough to people, that the people that use the building on the weekends can use the building on the weekends without trouble as well. It's not interfering.
The batting cage?
Yeah, all the, all the, all the indoor stuff you're talking about that doesn't come down. It comes down easily for P E and everything.
I, Randy had, my understanding was that, I'm not sure which, which groups are using it on the weekends, but that Randy had said the batting cage is up and needs to stay up. And one of the groups said, we can take it down. And he said, that's on you. But I'm not sure if it's coming down or not on the weekends. I, I would imagine it's not because of the way it's installed.
If I go look in there right now, the batting cage is.
Correct.
And they do P E round them? Or if I go in there right now, I can see both, both hoops.
So.
But we, the, the Cub Scouts have used it for, like, the plywood derbies and stuff. And the batting cage, the, the netting is just pushed up to where the, the bleachers are and then kind of like tied back with the cables. They're, they're still there and I will bet if it, I'll bet that's still up. It's just, you just push the netting aside and, and that's what you get until. Stuff is taken down and, and then I've heard that it is quite a process with cables up. So we can't put them up here, take them down.
But then a new rig would roll.
I knew. Yeah, it rises and rises up. Yeah, that's, Dave's assessment is exactly correct. The netting is, the netting is attached to the cables with zip ties and it just slides. From the side.
The kind you can reuse. Okay, so this is. So. This, this is something that we need to act on, we can't act on today. If we're interested in acting on it, do you, how, do you need, do you need to, how soon do you need to know? How soon, like, what's the, what's the, what's the lead time on equipment? Is the lead time on equipment some sort of something to, to be worried about here? Or can it wait for a month until the next regularly scheduled board meeting? Or need we meet an extra time?
Um, it would depend. That, that's a good, that's a good question. I didn't get a chance to talk to Sean because I wasn't there today. I can get you that information. I would say that. If it waits, if we're going to wait a month, I should probably. If we're going to wait a month, it would be good to hear strong objections now to know what we're waiting a month for. Otherwise, we could start to at least have contractors think about, you know, what. Reserve penciling in a spot in their schedule without money changing hands.
So to board members, am I sensing any strong objection to these actions to improve our sports facilities?
All right, is, is there anything that? The seventy fund, I know it takes care of all your athletic. It takes care of everything outside, but I don't think.
I think we asked this question when this came up. We asked this.
And it's where that's going to, yeah, I.
And I, but if this, if this could be used for the, in terms of being maintenance for field equipment, we'd like to know that. And then. I, I personally don't have any strong objections to this. And so I would think that we could. Either meet quickly and get it done. If you needed, if you needed to order it soon and there were any objections or any further debate, or if you thought we needed to involve the community. Or we can wait until next month and figure out. What the spend is and whether or not we can order the stuff in. So I guess. Maybe just get back to us and then if you get back to us and it's something that. Sean thinks is urgent to order and we need to act immediately, then we'll get together and schedule a special meeting.
Good, thanks.
Failing that, I'll have this on the agenda for next month. And we'll talk about it again then and act while it's properly worn. On the sixty seven five oh five. Does anybody have any questions there? Okay, so I think that's where we're going to leave it. Get back to me, Dave, and I'll get back to everybody to schedule a meeting or. There's, what's that thing you do? Doodle? Will you tell us doodle ball? Doodle, there's doodle poles. And not, not Thursday. Okay. Thank you for that.
One of these days I'll, I'll bring you some news. It doesn't involve tens of thousands of dollars.
That's.
You're running out of time.
Yeah.
I know.
Go, Mr. Shilling. Thank you very much, Dave. If you're, if you're, if, if you want to go, you can go. Sabrina, it's nice of you to stay, but we're not making you. It's lovely to have you, but nobody's making you stay. And so moving on. We're going to talk about board member, the board member education policy A thirty one. And.
Clay, can we do the truancy ops officer and just get that?
Oh, sure. I'd love to. I'd love to switch around. We're going to skip that and go to true officer and just get that done because that seems like a good idea.
So, so here's the deal, but the statute says that each school is supposed to designate a truancy officer. Kind of slipped off the radar when I came out here. To be perfectly honest, we did it every year in Kevin Flintfield, slipped off the radar here. Somebody brought it up and so I'm going around all the district meetings. Each building needs to have one. Typically. The principal or one of the principals. And Dave is, because he's not going to be the principal, I wouldn't designate him. But I will say this is that it is more of a. That's what I'm looking for. It's more of a figurehead position because. The truancy officer doesn't have a lot of authority in the, in the current environment because. If kids are truing, if we want to report kids truing, it requires an affidavit signed by the superintendent. Follow the state's attorney's office. So I'm going to be involved, me or whatever superintendent is in place, but for the next year, any next couple of years, it's me. If there is a truancy issue at Danville School, in fact, we just filed. About a month ago, an affidavit on a student who was attending Danville at the time and since transferred out. I, it, it came to me and I took care of, you know, gathering the information. I got it from, from Dave. He gave me the information I needed. I wrote, wrote out the affidavit and I filed it. So. But we should, if anybody, if anybody asked who was the truancy officer at Danville, we should be able to say it's. And it's not the superintendent. It's going to be somebody in the building.
I, I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we designate Sarah as our truancy officer. She's excited about it.
Nominate Larry.
I was going to say. The other, the other option.
Sarah, I heard Mark say he does all the work anyway.
I did too. I did too.
Edit it, edit it, Dave.
Tim, do you want to modify your motion to have. Mr. Schilling or, or Ms. Welch until a certain date and then.
Then they say it's not Larry. Not particularly, but.
We shouldn't have this at the reorganization.
Yeah, right. So this, so this one, this one should have been done. The statute says that you could name the sheriff. But I don't know how that works. And then you pay, and then you pay the sheriff per diem, the worker. Doesn't make any sense because it's called paperwork.
No, we don't need to do that.
And so I, I think that we're, we're certainly limited with, with who we can offer this job to. This glorious illustrious job. And it's no show work, I guess, or something in the neighborhood. And I just have, I have one, just one quick question. What if a kid is tuitioning in from ascending school that's not in our supervisor union? And they are truing. Do you send that to their truen officer?
No, I don't think so. I don't know. If they're tuitioning in and they're not in special education, we're in the LEA. So we would take care of it. If they are in special education, they're sending district as the LEA and then. Sabrina would be involved.
You probably know about them really fast.
Listen, this, I filed three affidavits in, in the three year, almost three years that I've been here and none in the two years that I'm superintendent. In Washington Northeast. So it's not like it's, Sarah, this doesn't come up every day.
No, I know.
Once a week with another truancy case.
I got a motion on the floor to nominate. Daniel's true officer. I got a second from Melissa Conley. Is there any further discussion?
You'll do great.
Right, hearing none, can I have a vote all in favor of Sarah Welch as the Daniel's true officer?
Hi.
I would like to vote yes as well. Everybody thinks it's a good idea.
It's confidence in you.
Thank you very much. There are six true kids right now, so get on the stick. Don't, don't try sleeping. Now. I don't need you to one of them. I don't need, I don't need either administrator at this point. So we're, because we're going to discuss board education policy and then we're going to discuss public comment policy. Or public comment in general, and then we're going to go. If you guys want to go, it's okay with me. But you're welcome to stay.
But if you like us that much, you can hang out.
We do, but.
So moving on. Board member education policy is A thirty one and I, we learned about this at a recent CCSU meeting and it came up as a policy that had just been, good night Sabrina. Thank you very much. And. And you, you have it here in A thirty one. It's listed in the policy that we're looking at, we're looking at as a policy to recommend a policy, but it's actually a policy to consider. And that came, we, we learned that recently and so A thirty one is a policy to consider. And so we are currently going to consider this policy and you want to tell us about this policy or do you want me to talk us through it? So the policy is about. Keeping yourselves educated and I thought it was really, really relevant because some of us are getting educated in our news too. We're all, three of us are in new spots. And we don't know all of the things. And so there are a lot of ways in which BSBA can help you learn what you're doing. But there's a lot of ways also that we can educate ourselves. And there's, there's a lot of things that we, we're watching one webinar in this, in this lead up to this. And. We are, so we're, we're working on educating ourselves using the resources that the SBA provides. And that's what this policy calls for, it's that you. It's incumbent on you to educate yourself and to come to these meetings prepared. And there are a lot of. There's a, there's a lot of publications and there's a lot of information that can, that can be thrown at you if you're willing to accept it. And if you accept it, you'll be a better board member for having accepted it. And so. That's, that's what we're doing. It talks about here that there's eight hours of professional training. For, for board chairs. And so I've signed up for a whole bunch of webinars here because they're not in person. And I've got one this Thursday. Actually, there's, there's a webinar this Thursday for board chairs and perspective for chairs. People that might have the difficult board chair they have to deal with, that you could also sign up for and you could sort of see what your, what other people are dealing with to be black to. And just because it doesn't necessarily pertain to you, doesn't mean you can't learn from it. And that's another thing. So if there's one that comes on, and if you sign up for one of these webinars that comes in your, in your thing and there's, there's weekly. There's weekly ones that come. If you sign up for one of them and you can't make it to the actual webinar. The, the webinar still exists. You just can't participate in it. But when you can participate in them, you can get your direct questions answered, even if you don't ask them, but sometimes you may have to ask them. So we, we're going to consider this policy as something that we want to talk, that we, that we want to do, but we don't necessarily have to act on it unless somebody is, feels compelled to do so.
No, I think you did a nice job with explaining it. The SG Board, they considered it. I decided not to, not to recommend its adoption by the district boards. It just passed on it. You expressed an interest in.
Talking about. What I really wanted to do is talk about it because I knew we were going to have this, we were going to have this, at a minimum, we were going to have two new board members in a new chair. So talking about this is what we want, Tim?
Well, and so my only question in this is because I, I would hope that we're all sort of doing these things anyway, but my question would be. Currently, and I, I've never implied, currently, if we went to one of these trainings, are you reimbursed for travel and other expenses related? They didn't get that training or is that really the difference?
They haven't been doing them in person for a while.
Well, right, when I say currently, I mean.
So I went to, I went to one when I started in twenty nineteen and we all sat at a big table and the, the, the first of all superintendent. Was late, left early. And so I sat and got to know Mark and then they fed us dinner and it was in fairly, and we sat there and we learned and you, you just.
Well, that's a different.
And were you reimbursed for travel?
I didn't put in. I didn't, I didn't know that.
Because, because otherwise it's sort of this, this, I would hope that we're sort of doing this. I know you're going to do this. And then plus, you know. And then plus, you know, and so is the difference here best?
Yeah, I mean, it's, there are people on a routine basis in this district that work for the district in some capacity or another, and you are contractors to work for the district. You have mileage concerns and you think that you should be reimbursed for those miles, then you should be saying to somebody, please reimburse me for this mile. So if you do something and, but what you might be told is, if you're not supposed to be doing that thing, somebody else is, it's operational and you're not in the operational side. But in this case, if you do board education and you have to travel for it, you say, I want to go to, I want to go to a, um, to, I think in Boston, to learn about school boards, what you're probably gonna be told is, there's stuff to do in Vermont. We have school board at home and you just do the school board that we have at home. We don't need to go to Boston.
Same that Tim was talking about is, and, and they're not even doing it this year either. They used to, the S A has a spring conference and BSBA used to partner that. And we would come in the Wednesday afternoon before the conference and board chairs were supposed to come, superintendent was there and we did an afternoon of workshops and presentations and an evening dinner and that magically turned into the eight hour requirement. It did, you know, I never got the, the arithmetic. It didn't make sense to me, but they, they, they let it go like that. Now they, last year, they, they did four two hour seminars, webinars online. They're gonna do that again this year. And it's open, it's supposed to be for, it's open to all board members if they want to participate, but superintendent, board chairs are expected to do that, to meet that statutory requirement.
And so in that case, when you sign up for those, there is a charge and it says it's gonna cost you seventy five dollars. But then you just put in your sending district and that bill doesn't go to you, goes to the district. So in that, in that, in that way, you're reimbursed. So in that way, you're not, you're not being charged for that. So that is a way that that, that's how that could be practically indicated to happen. So we don't have to act on this. I just wanted, I wanted to bring it up and remind everybody about these opportunities. And so if I see, there's a, there's a weekly, there's a weekly newsletter that you probably all get, or if you don't get, you should get. And then if you're on the weekly newsletter, eventually there's gonna be a way to get some free socks, get the free socks. And that's about it. So does anybody, like, like I say, I'm, I'm not interested necessarily in acting on this unless somebody's powerfully compelled to do so. I just wanted to talk about it briefly so that we all understood that it's incumbent on you to do the education of yourself. In addition to coming to the meetings prepared, you're better for it. Okay, moving on. So, moving on, the next one that we, that I had on this one, we, we can be short with this one, but I asked you guys all to watch a webinar about public comments that was from November twenty twenty one when the, the atmosphere in Vermont was highly charged, let's say. And we were, so the atmosphere was highly charged and there were a lot of people that wanted to make a lot of comments. And there were a lot of people in our district who had lots of things to say, but there were also people in who weren't from our district, who had a lot of things to say and continue to come here to say them. And some of the stuff, we couldn't help them and we didn't really need to hear it. And so we, we just want to talk about how we're going to approach public comment going forward, given that a lot of the public comments that we were seeing wasn't relevant to us and we couldn't do anything about. But that because in, 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 in the period leading up to that, to the, to the highly charged situation with the masks, prior to that, we had been outwardly soliciting tons and tons of public comment. We'd been looking for people. We'd been saying to people, come and talk to us about this, about, about, you know, about the, um, the school symbol situation to, to, to sort of get to an ending on that. And we wanted people that came to, to come to winter school in nineteen fifty seven, didn't live here anymore. Or nineteen eighty two, they didn't live anymore to come in and say their piece so that everybody had a chance to talk about what they were talking about. So we were soliciting public comment from outside of the district and opened it up beyond stakeholders. So then when this highly charged situation started, we were in a de facto policy of just letting anybody come up and talk and then turn around and be on the move. And I think that a lot of the people that we got with the mass situation were coming in from outside because there was subsequently a movie that they could watch of themselves. Because we're the only district in this supervisory union that posts our videos. And we had our videos up pretty quick and they were, and the newspaper lady would put your picture in the paper if she could pull it from the, from the video. And so I think that there was a lot of motivation for people to come here. And that really, really, and by the time we got to the end of it, it evolved quite a bit. And the December meeting, I think it was the January meeting devolved quite a bit. And the discussion was not civil and the discussion was not on point. And there were accusations in that meeting being ledied not at the Danville School Board, but at the superintendent from somebody who did not live in this district. And it wasn't relevant to us and it wasn't anything we could do anything about. And it was ugly and I don't think we should allow it. And so that is why I wanted to have you guys look at this webinar. And the webinar was done by the BSBA, an hour and a half, and the, the, the main presenter there was Pedro Lynn, who's our lawyer, who we all know. And when we talk to him always, he's smiling because every time he's talking to me, he's getting paid. So, and he's, he's the only person that smiles when they talk to me because he gets paid. And so that's great for him. But so he, what he talked about was a lot about open meeting law, about what was allowable, about, about who could speak for how long they could speak and what the purpose of public comment at a board meeting is. And so, and I know, and I'm, I'm saying a lot of these things to, to you gentlemen here, to Dave and to Tim, that they know, but I'm saying them anyway because we're talking about. And public comment is not about addressing your individual issues on that day. Public, you, the public, th- these meetings are a meeting of us five in the public. And people have to attend so that we're not doing back, backboard dealing and spending people's money without anything. And so the people that are attending are here to, they're allowed in to watch and the people that are viewing are allowed in to watch, but they're not participants in the meeting. There are, there's a segment in the meeting for public comment, again, where people can either, if they need to, express their frustrations, if they have some questions, they can ask the questions. But those options are also available to them at any time via email, via a letter or via email. Those questions are always asked and answerable. And it's a lot easier to get somebody to ask a question. And if they put their name on the bottom of it and they put something in writing, they're gonna tend to be a lot more civil. And so, um, one of the things I want to talk about is how we, how we entertain public comment when we entertain public comment during the course of our meetings. And who is allowed to come? So I opened it up to board members. Does anybody have any questions or input? And again, this is not, this is not policy, this is procedure. I have plenty more to say, but I'm just, I'm just yammering here. So, who's on? Nobody does, I'll keep talking.
Why, I, I guess I don't know what you're really looking for here.
So what I'm, I'm looking for, did you watch the, did you watch the webinar? Did you understand that, that the stakeholders in this district who come in and ask to speak should be allowed to speak? And while we can make sure that that stays civil, we can, we can make sure that that has a time commitment and they can say what they want to say in, within a time limit. If there, it's, for me, people from outside the district, we don't have to let them talk, but we currently do. And there was, there was a, uh, the, the lawyer wasn't entirely certain that it was a great idea to restrict people from talking. But one of the things that we can do is we can say that if somebody from outside that we didn't invite would like to speak, that they have to first tell us that they're interested in speaking and writing so that we know that they're coming. So that we're not blindsided by people letting accusations and threats. And so that's, that's one thing that I'm looking to consider. Another thing is to put a disclaimer on the agendas that says, this is what we allow. We allow speakers to speak for X number of minutes about whatever topic that they have, a nice type three. And he said, if you give somebody more than three minutes, then chances are they're gonna repeat themselves. And repetition is the enemy of being concise, because I, so you, you, that's what you want to limit is repetition, the people joining on.
When you can, something just like this in our agenda that just that this is.
So not only get to put it in there, then I've got to read it. So I've got to read it before it happens and that's fine too. And so then I've got to read it and I've got to say to my friend that comes who's gonna tell me that everything's great and we're doing all dandy. And I love that person. I don't give that person four minutes. And then the next person who I don't like, give them two and two minutes. I say, yeah, you get two minutes. You can't play favors, right? But you, but you don't, you don't play favors with what you're doing. And then you keep it consistent across the board so that when you cut somebody off for being repetitive, or you cut somebody off for being out of order. And then there's some stuff in there about what the, the specific script words that other board members would say. And we tried some of these and Bruce pointed this. You could, you could tell with Bruce's actions in the late thing, that he had gone to this webinar and he had tried to implement these policies late in his actions because he tried to cut a couple of these people off using some of the stuff that was in this webinar. But it wasn't working and it wasn't in writing, that's why it wasn't working. So what I want to do is put some of this in, um, into our practice so that when, if we enter into these situations, then we can, um, better handle them as opposed to some of what was devolved. And again, we're in a period of relative calm in this exact moment. And I don't know how long it's gonna last. Like one, because at the next meeting, there are going to be five or six, seventy of people in, and they're gonna, they're gonna be up. So they're, they're gonna have seen that number and they're gonna want to come in and talk about it. We gotta, we want them to talk. And so I think that those, that's the other part of this. Those discussions are community discussions. And in those discussions, again, we're going to be inviting people to come in. And so in those discussions, we, we're not inviting ex-members of the Danville community that live in far flung reaches of the country because they are not stakeholders currently in the discussion of the taxes here.
So I think three points. One, the open meeting law says that the board, the board has to allow an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions or comment before it takes action on a more agenda item. And that's something that this board is, is always done and, and the boards that I work with always do. So we, you can't just sit here and talk about something and say, okay, we're gonna call a vote and have a vote. Because if somebody wants to, you know, Allison, I'm sorry, I don't know. Wants to make a comment about a warrant agenda item, you have, you have to give them an opportunity to speak. I think that, um, I think there's been a, there's a general misunderstanding. It's not just here, it's in all the districts of misunderstanding about what the intention of public comment. It's not an opportunity for dialogue. So some, you know, you may have noticed that, you know, that I, I try not to respond to people during public comment. I've had people ask questions. Allison, you've asked questions. Yeah, I, I'm really not supposed to respond. I mean, the, the intent of public comment is to say, these are some things that I'm concerned about. And then the, the discussion can happen offline or, or the board might say, based on what this person said, this is an item we want to take up, warn and take up in the future meeting. Last thing I wanted to say is that C C S D, starting last year, started putting a statement on its agenda which stated the purpose of public comment. And I will share that with you. And Molly to look at and, and you can decide if, you know, if you want to put that or something like it onto the agendas. Uh, and it, it's helped in C C S D because it kind of, we, we haven't had, this isn't, you know, this isn't Franklin Lester, you know, where, you know, people have been throwing things and they, they stopped meeting in public because the meetings got violent.
Now additionally, in C C S D, they do two sets of public comment. They do one at the beginning, one at the end.
Not anymore.
Not anymore? They were doing that. And I thought that that probably could, that probably could have helped us. There's, there's people that don't necessarily want to hear anything except themselves talk.
And yeah, they don't do, they have one, and I, different boards do it at different times. So I'm doing it at the beginning of the meetings. I'll do it at, you know, at the end of the meeting. Um, I'll send that to you and Molly.
And we've moved ours to depending on.
So it sounds like you want something in writing to refer to that the public, we can all point, or you can point to us the chair and say, this is our policy or is it a policy or do you think writing it on the agenda?
This is, this is, this is the procedure. This is, yeah. And so, but, but it's, but at the same time, I'm not trying to build an ugly room. You know, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to say that nobody can talk, but Clay, I'm trying, I'm trying to say that we gotta move along, right? But also, nobody can talk, but Clay. Well, I think that they have, they, they've got a whole one page thing when they talk about limiting. And I don't think we need all of that, but I just think that we need some sort of guidance. Yeah, as to, to the public so that when they walk in, people don't feel singled out when they get told three minutes.
When the reality is, if we want it, we could do a one page thing that just sits at the bottom of our agenda every, you know, and then it's there.
How much do I have to, how much of it do I have to leave and they read?
Well, that's, that therein lies the question. Or you can say here, see attached.
They usually tell people anyway, I'm giving everybody three minutes. So that's already, you're, if you're saying that anyway.
Usually Bruce tells me to shush. Bruce isn't here anymore.
Yeah, and we haven't decided whose job it is to shush you yet.
I think, um, I think something like that should be posted right on our website, like right at the top. I think a lot of people, it, when it's posted, it's as such, then it can be, we can refer to it instead of.
Yeah, I think if it's on every agenda going forward and then that would be, because we just got a new website that's, that's cooking up. We, Robert's arcane website, we talked about Scott, Scott Marsh has been building this new website with it, with a new way to feed, to feed into stuff and others are adding stuff. So our new agendas are posting up now on a, on a new spot in, on the Danville website. And so if we put it on every agenda, if people want to look for the agendas, it should be on. And so I, yeah.
I have one little thing. People should be willing to, and so I, when the superintendent and the principal had their mug shots on there of all the controversies that we've been through in the last, was it, you know, it, it just, people getting fired, people getting just, this mask thing was by, by the, the public comments were just brutal coming out of this. And I think once this person has submitted their their documentation or something like that, you get to put on the, you put, uh, put on the website. And that's it. You don't, can't keep coming up and every meeting taking five minutes of public.
Well, and that's right. I was just gonna say you also have to be consistent. So even like tonight, when there's, we still have to say it's three minutes because that's the other thing is we also set ourselves up by having a past precedent of, you know, oh, it's the same couple of people. We sort of, you know, we, we chat, we let them talk and whatever, we, because we don't feel we need the three minute because it's only two people to talk. And so we set ourselves up for that in that regard too, by saying, oh, just chat away, you know, and so we would need to be consistent also at every meeting and saying, these, these are our rules.
Just a, the public, um, blurring out helpful suggestions. You know, just, just being the sixth board member and, you know, saying, oh, but also this. And so we have to just sort of work to curtail that in general when the discussion is not community, it's just, just.
So, so I, I went ahead and put out, this is a C C S D agenda for next week. There's two things that they have on there. They actually get some work to, to set meeting norms and that's on every agenda. It's right at the beginning. I can send those to you too. And then down here, there's a statement, maybe I can make it even bigger. It just lays it, you know, lays out what the purpose of public comment in it is and and how the, you know, how the board's gonna take it and how they're gonna react to it. So, and that's on every agenda. So it's something that you could consider doing. I'll send both of those. I don't, I don't think you should just put meeting norms all of it up. I'm not suggesting that, but I'll send it to you so you get a sense of, you know, if you wanted to have a conversation.
Mark, are those like ground rules? Is that what you're, like the meeting norms?
Yeah, they, yeah, they are. And then there's something weird in there. It's a typical things like, you know, you're gonna be civil. And you're gonna listen to everybody and you're gonna assume good intentions and all that stuff.
It, it's pretty common now to have, and in any committee meeting, for the first meeting, it's whether our expectations chip amongst each other.
Yeah, that's another thought too, is to do something like that. That's, you could put that on a website like.
Like, and we would, we would want to sit together and do that work. That would should be.
Right. Okay, so let's, we'll, we'll get some things to review and we'll put that back on next month's agenda again as something, as something to talk about. And then, and again, this isn't, this is a policy, this is a procedure. So we need to come to consensus on what, what makes sense. And then, um, I think specifically, Mark, I want to know your thoughts on allowing public comment from outside the district. And if you want, if you wanted to put some sort of constraint on that and.
I'm gonna bounce that back to you. That's what the board chairs just.
So, and I, yeah.
The other thing I was just gonna say is a piece of clarity too, and this just may, may be me, but I was particularly struck in the webinar when they were talking about whether you accept public comment after each particular agenda item, right? Because if you save it to the end, questions could be lost, could be less relevant now. So I'm trying to like.
Right. So if you have an agenda item that's warned and you have a discussion and you're gonna have a vote on it, then you can, then you, you're supposed to under statute allow people ask questions or comment before the board votes. So that's not considered public comment. That's in, in the same sense as just somebody coming in saying, I want to talk about something that's on.
And so as, as a, for instance, we did not do that at the March third meeting where we spent people's money. We spent people's money on an elevator and we spent people's money prior to that on something else, but.
Yeah, man, I think there were people there and you.
But we had two actions. I didn't ask. So, and so then when I watched that webinar again, I remember I didn't ask. So that's, that's, that's the situation is why I didn't do exactly what I'm, what I'm. So then when I watched that webinar again, I remember that I didn't ask. So that's, that's, that's the most situations why I didn't do exactly what I'm, what I'm saying we should be doing. And I remember not asking, not asking the second time because I didn't want anybody to say the kid's name. And it was, I was, all I was doing was not saying the kid's name. So.
And I guess if I can just clarify, I think why I'm bringing it up is because if you're a new, a new public person coming in. If you look at the, the agenda, number seven is the only place I get to talk as a community member. So I think it's just important for people to know. That there are other opportunities to interject.
Right. So like, and then that, that's going to be the, in the workflow, do I read the public comment? Um, piece at the front is that if there's action, where you're going to be allowed to speak, failing that. Don't blur out.
So what I, what other practices of other board chairs that I work with is before they call the vote, they ask, they just didn't have the same. They're ready for the, anybody besides board members that have a question or, or comment about what we're about to take action on.
Yeah, it's just.
And it's just, it's a, you don't have to clutter up the agenda. It's, it's a protocol.
And then that's what I like because of public input after, uh, before each action, there is input, but. People are, um. Some people might think, you know, I can't talk on that until after it's decided. So I, I think, you know, that's what we've been doing. I think that's what, what works good.
All right. So we'll put that on the next month's agenda and then we'll continue to talk about it. And then Marco sends some things around. We'll look at them and we'll work, we'll do that. Okay. That brings us to other business. Can I have none? Do you may have any other business? All right. Public comment. So here we go. So a public comment, um, we're working for a type three today and. Uh, Katie, public comment. Lance still here? So I've got one public comment. It's like Allison.
Yes.
All right. So we'll put you on the clock.
Okay, that's fine. And I understand where you're coming from.
And again, this is not about making an ugly room.
Start until you're done.
This is about, this is about getting to go.
Um, it has to go both ways. You're asking for respect from the people who are commenting publicly, but it has to go both ways. And I've had a lot of eye rolling, especially from you, just because we feel differently on something. And it's upsetting. You have to also be respectful to the people who are coming and standing up for their kids. Okay? I would love for my second son to come to this school, but I do not feel it is a safe place. My oldest son had a wonderful time. There is absolutely no safety data on masks and we know they cause harms. This is why the parents were standing up. These are our children, right? So there was a real reason. So all I'm asking is for respect back. And I have shown respect, but many times I was made fun of. People ask me, oh, what are you talking about? You know, et cetera. I have two degrees in science. I know how to read science. I care deeply for the children as I know you all do, or you wouldn't be here. So all I ask is respect both ways. And what we all just went through was a really big deal and there was massive debate and so much unknown and everyone was trying to find their way through, right? You guys were all trying to do your best job. I respect that fully. Parents were also trying to do what they thought was best for their children. That also has to be respected. People feel differently in this world and it has to be respected. Okay? And that's all I ask both ways. That's my biggest thing right now. And I would love to send my son here if I felt like it was a safe place. And the other thing why I think it's really good what you're doing, as long as again, it can be reciprocal with respect. Is that you're going to have a lot of pushback as we start to get into people having concerns with critical race theory, diversity, equity, inclusion, spending money, et cetera. I think there will be more public comments coming in. So if you can lay down the groundwork, it's going to be huge and it's going to help everybody. But please make sure it's reciprocated. People who are coming here are putting themselves out to the community to express something because they feel so deeply. Because they love their children so much and you guys care for them and we all want the best and it has to come together and be understood and respected. And that's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was I under three?
So for future, thank you, uh, future agenda items, we have, um.
Oh, you're good.
Anybody else in the public before I go on?
Lance, you're still on. Put your hand, uh, okay. Go ahead.
No, I'm good. I, I. Realize Allison was pretty emotional there, but I, you know, I concur. I mean, you know, we have to be respectful for each way. And all of you on the board are tasked with dealing with people of many different backgrounds and. Not always concurrent with, with your views and it's just a, it's a tough thing that. Has to kind of go both ways, but, um. I did also notice, you know, some of the negativity and, and, you know, I, I can see where she's coming from, but. I think all in all, you're, you're in a tough position and, um, you're in the public eye and it's not the easiest job. But just, uh, as you go forward with, with, you know, your. Your thoughts on public involvement, you know, um. Just, um, remember that, you know, the constituents in the areas, who, who is important here and their children are in these schools as well. And there are many different views and the more different views, the better and the, the better of, uh, organization we can be in a group. But all in all, I, you know, that, that's all I have to say. I'm just curious watching the process.
There's no more public. So there's no more public comment. You got one more chance to go, Katie. Right, uh, future agenda items. So what I'm going to have. On eyes and we're going to have something on building plan. If I say building plan, does that make sense?
Yeah.
As just an agenda item, we're going to have, um. Public comments as board discussion. Public comment procedure.
DM equipment, yep.
True and, uh, towards the officer reporter.
And I think that's it for now, as far, as far as we know. And then other things will come up throughout the month. So building plan. Public comment, the board procedure and gym equipment for, uh, possible action. And that's it. And, uh, it's eight thirty seven. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I would make said motion.
Second, Melissa. All in favor?